Folks, we're gonna get started?
Thanks. Are we ready? Thank you. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Independence?
My Pledge of Independence is to reflect the United States of America and the truth to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There's one potential agenda item addition that I know of. I sent an email earlier today, I don't know if you all have a chance to see it yet. But a gentleman by the name of Randolph Horner from Woodstock has a proposal tonight for the town board for a possible solar farm on the landfill. And so there's been a request to have the village possibly be an additional party to that program. And I was supposed to get contracts from Randolph earlier in the week to send you. So we had time to ask Joe about it, but I just got them this morning, so. It's not really much of a discussion, I can give you the background, tell you what I know about it, but really it would be, for me, a matter of, you know, authorize me to sign onto this, if it doesn't commit us to anything, pays it. At least that's the extent of the conversation, I think, tonight.
Right.
So that, other than that, is there anything else for the agenda?
Uh, yeah, did you guys see the email? I don't know if it was from today or yesterday regarding the Grove Street parking spot.
You know, I just saw that as I was pulling up my packet here.
Oh geez, it's right up against the.
It was today at twelve thirty.
Yeah, I sent it out to Kurt into Blue.
I wouldn't mind talking, I mean, I know we have a super packed agenda, but if you wanted to put it toward the end, and if we have a chance, and if not, table it, I would like to discuss it if possible.
I don't have it, I just, it was in my box.
There were two last minutes.
Way up here.
Are the events before our next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, we should add those, yeah.
Well, it's not before our next meeting, I don't think, but it's right after.
Well, a reasonable time, yeah.
The Coda one is definitely before our next meeting. And.
October thirteenth.
And October thirteenth for the other.
Three days later, so that wouldn't let it fly.
I don't know, I didn't see them.
I just saw it through the.
Well, we'll, we'll just add that on at the end as well. Alright, anything else? Any objections adding those three items?
I'll move the agenda.
Oh, second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, and public comment? Anyone? No? Alright, yeah.
Um. Um, I, I know that this evening you're gonna be talking about whether or not to have a public hearing about the fracking prohibition. And what I'd like to say is that, um, in a way, I think it's even more important to do it than maybe do it the way I would like it, like I would like a community rights ordinance, I'd like a zoning ordinance. But I really feel that it's more important at this point to at least get something on the books. Something on the books. Even if it's not as strong as we think, because we can always, we can always add to it. So I just wanna make that clear, that the sooner we do it, the better, it doesn't have to be perfect, and we can always add to it. And I wanna add one other thing, which I found out, which is really interesting, which is all across New York State, there are municipalities where the board has voted to let fracking happen. There was no public comment, there was no letting them know. In other words, a few people on the board have property, and they want it fracking, and they brought it up, and they voted on it. So what's happening in those communities is they are now forming a new group to do something about it. So I think we're very fortunate in New Paltz, not that you guys are going to do that, but we're just very fortunate in New Paltz that you're willing to, you know, keep bringing it up, trying to get it right, you know, just getting something there, so I just, I just wanted to mention that, that it's unbelievable some of the places where they've actually said, let's frac how it's happened. And I'm just very pleased that, you know, we're gonna do something, and the sooner the better. That's my comment.
Thank you, Rosalyn.
Thank you.
Alright, any announcements?
Uh, yeah, I have an announcement.
Katie?
Regarding the Walker Valley Rail Trail. Um, they're having an event cleanup this Saturday, starting at ten and an end at twelve. And let's see if I can just pull up the email here. Uh, and it meets at the Rotary Park, Main Street, Newt Hall, it's breaking off into groups, they're gonna do some stuff on the rail trail, and there's supposedly supposed to be a lot of students coming out, cleaning up litter, cutting up branches. Um, they might send some people over to Sojo Truth Park on Plains Road. And if you would like to come out, that would be really delightful. It's Saturday from ten to twelve, and anyone's welcome, and we would appreciate everyone's support. Oh, and, and also, while I'm at it, the Walker Valley Land Trust website is up and running, and it's www.vrta.org, so you can go check that out, and that'll be cool.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, Local Food Week is coming up, it's the first week of October, um, October first through the seventh, and it will be culminating in an Eat in the Street event on Church Street, um, which we'll talk about tonight. And it's gonna be from eleven thirty AM to three thirty PM. Yard Sales is going to be playing the Misfit Toys and Thu Jones. And we have a lot of restaurants signed up, um, and other organizations, and we are still taking, uh, you know, people if they want a table, but, um, you know, not, not vend anymore, because we have to get the peddlers' permits in for that. But contact nplocalfoodweek@gmail.com if you wanna get more information.
Thanks, anyone else?
I have just, uh, three meetings to mention. The Public Outreach Committee for the Consolidation Study uh, meets here on Tuesday, the October ninth at seven PM. And everyone's welcome to come to that. Uh, the next day, uh, October tenth, also here is the Ethics Commission, we'll meet at five thirty, that's immediately preceding the regular meeting of the Village Board. And then on Wednesday, October seventeenth, at six PM, we'll have the next meeting of the Revolving Loan Committee.
Thanks. You got any thoughts?
Nope.
Alright, uh, I just got two, for anyone who's interested, the, uh, sewer project on Huguenot Street, installing the new second chambers is just about finished, they've been online since, for about a week now, and the last we have to do is, uh, a little bit of paperwork and get some of the debris cleared away along the, um, the river there. As well, the Hazard Park drainage is moving along, we've got, we're waiting on some final information from SHPO, the State Historical Preservation Office, about, uh, so that we can file the archaeology report from Professor Diamond. And we're hoping to be able to go out to bid, um, well, we're hoping to have all of that ready to get to, um, our agenda the next time we meet, so that we can authorize, uh, the bid package, and then we can still get the, uh, that whole project on this fall, according to, at least that's the goal. So we're looking at finishing two, getting two of the infrastructure projects off our plate, um, at least, so. There's that, and unless there's any more announcements, uh, we've got Kurt is here to discuss a couple things. Um, but is there anyone else, uh, here for something specific, well, fracking, obviously, Rosalyn?
Well, we have the, uh.
We have an interview for Ethics Day.
Oh, the Ethics Day.
And the presentation, uh, from Bike Ped, which Jackie answered, and that's the first thing on our agenda.
Oh, oh, Jackie, thank you. So who's here for that, so that's the, for this?
It says Bill Weinstein, but.
Yeah, I was, I'm sorry, so I was looking for Bill.
I knew, I knew that.
Much love to you, happy.
That's not this Jonathan for the Ethics Commission?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Let's see, well, I guess.
That right what?
See if it's a school. Um, yeah, basically, one through five, we got folks here for.
And six.
And six? Oh, well, it's not as interesting as it sounds, it's misleading, it's, uh, the topographic survey is something we need to do no matter what happens.
No discussion impossible, stream dealing.
Right, but if you look underneath, it's, it was an old heading from the prior agenda.
Okay.
The actual decision is basically not a decision, if we even could do status quo, we have to do the exact same survey, so. It's basically, we have to get it done. Um, so how would you guys like to, you wanna interview first and then come back out, or is there a preference?
Well, why don't we do Bike Ped, and then interview?
Yeah.
Okay, is that alright with you guys? Okay, so Jackie, the floor is yours.
Thank you, I, Mayor West. Trustees Vasco, Glenn, Kimbiss, and Rhodes. I'm Jackie Andrews, and I am a Town of New Paltz representative to the New Paltz Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, which we refer to as Bike Ped. The other committee members are from the town, Alan Stout and Clark Peaslee. And from the village, Matt Fussar, Justin Dates, and Judy Mait. I'm assuming that these are people who are familiar to you. I'm here to tell you and the New Paltz community about an exciting and important project the committee is launching the third week of October. A survey, and here is a copy of the survey, of residents to learn as much as we can, oh, that's right, if I sent you, okay.
Yeah.
About local attitudes toward community facilities for cycling and walking. The survey will take place from Sunday, October twenty first, through Saturday, October twenty seventh. Uh, we will place survey boxes. Voila, a survey box, uh, at about fifteen key locations in the community. We're targeting both the town, the village hall, True Value Hardware, Starbucks, the bus station, and a group of rarely, very high-traveled, very varied places for the survey to sit. Um, walking and biking keeps people healthy, and it cuts down on the use of gas, it makes our communities more friendly. Um, and in any way, we all have to walk, every one of us gets out of our car and walks somewhere, so that we're all a pedestrian, and some of us are cyclists. Uh, the good news is that New Paltz is already walking and biking. According to Planner Laval, U.S. Census data disclosed that eight point one percent of SUNY, I mean, I'm sorry, of New Paltz residents walk to work, and five point one percent of residents bike to work. So these are the highest levels in the Hudson Valley, and they're actually on par with New York City, and you know how much money they have spent on trying to make their community more bikeable and more walkable.
Jackie, I'm sorry, I think they're, I think the eight point one percent may have been the margin of error, I think it's thirty percent, if you.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, this is Phil, Phil Rolfes, and I like that.
It's actually thirty percent.
It's higher, thirty percent, alright.
We're at a margin of error of eight point one percent, because, because I think in a small community, you may have a greater margin of error.
Uh, I see.
I'm sorry to.
Yeah, that's good.
So my class is just in the village or the whole, the whole town?
That's the village, and, and of course, the numbers could be culled for, um, could be compiled for the town and the village together.
And was bike to work, was that also a margin of error?
Actually, no, bike to work is, um, is listed under other, but other than, um, you know, unicycles or skateboards, it pretty much means bicycles. So we're, we're within, um, one-third of a percentage point of not just the city of New York, but the borough of Manhattan. Um, now, obviously, a lot of people take mass transit to Manhattan, so I don't mean to, um, to overstate some of the stuff, but it is true that we, nobody is gonna, not too many places are gonna come nearest when it comes to walking to work. And that doesn't necessarily include students, as I understand the census data, they're not, that, that's different than, than commutation. Um, so it is, it is higher than, uh, than Manhattan.
Okay, well, I'm a person who walks to work, I'm lucky enough to live close enough, and it's a lovely thing. Um, Bike Ped has always enjoyed the support of the town board, so we've come to you tonight to, and Bill Weinstein is over at the town, uh, speaking to the town board as we, as right now. Uh, we'd like you to support this effort, um, the town is supporting the effort by agreeing to copy the survey. So we're going to have these boxes, we'll have copies of the survey, we'll have a little pen attached to it, and then we'll leave them there, each of our locations has an angel, someone who's going there has kind of, you know, prepared the ground, and the, the managers and, and the people responsible for the sites will be ready for the survey, and we'll check back to pick up copies and also encourage everybody to encourage. So we'll come to you, you're one of our sites, and we'll ask you for a good location for the box, and also for you to bring it to the attention of people when they come in seeking services, and also to encourage, you know, through your own, um, networks, to encourage people to fill out the survey. So thank you for your support, um, we, Bike Ped has committed to improving the quality of life in the village and town, our lovely community that we share, and I know that this is a goal that you support as well. So any questions, I'd be happy, yes?
Um, I was thinking, it'd be really easy to make a Google form of this, and offer it online, and we could post it on our Village of New Paltz Facebook, and on the website, and probably can do it as well. And then, like, that social networking might be an easy way to spread it around. Um, and I wouldn't mind volunteering to set it up, it'd be super easy to do.
Okay.
Um, so I don't know if, if that's an option, or if that's something you guys would choose to do.
Well, we had much conversation about it, uh, and we started with the idea of an online, um, but it's, uh, uh, it, and, and we went to paper, and went to a kind of a, a sampling of choice locations as another deployment device. But this, it could certainly something that we could talk about, because it could, it could extend the range.
Right.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, if you want to mention that.
Alright, that'd be, that'd be great, so you're a Google back?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's.
They can, they can file the data for you, right?
So, yeah, it goes all the data, puts it on a spreadsheet, um, and then you can do whatever you want, I mean, you can enter the rest of the data, and then, you know.
Good boy.
Actually, I'm going around with the camera in my backpack, so.
Yeah, alright, alright, okay.
Well, look at your fancy stuff over there.
Right, I know.
I, I'm jealous. This thing is clunky.
And my, and my email address is, um, bryankimbistrustee@gmail.com.
Carry more of an eye candy. You can carry more of an eye candy.
Okay.
I've got a bigger bag for this thing.
Any other questions? I work at the college in, in institutional research, and survey research is one of the things that my office does, and so this is something that's very familiar to me, it's, this is a very nice little, you know, doing a community survey is a very, very costly thing, and this is a very nice little methodology, I think the locations we've chosen, it brings in a lot of people, a varied socioeconomic levels, because that's, of course, really important, and, uh, we, uh, we're really hopeful that you'll give us a little picture of how people think, about how walkable and how bikeable New Paltz is.
This is great, and I think we have a perfect spot for that, with all the other kinds of forms and things that are next to the folks' window, if I have it pulled, everybody.
Well, we're bringing closer to our, our date, October twenty first through October twenty seventh.
Great.
And we'll see what we get.
Sure.
Alright?
And your results will be available when?
Well, absolutely, we'll have to be, we'll have to input it, uh, into, uh, you know, a survey tool, and then we'll have results. You know, and that's a good question, we need to kind of have a date where we promise results. Right.
Well, thank you, Jackie.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you, and, um, I, I, there's no disrespect, but I probably will leave.
Oh, no, it's, it's, it's.
You're not gonna stay there immediately?
We need to vote on that.
We've got, we've got forms to talk about, and bills and claims to approve, how can you miss that? Alright, so I move to go into executive session to interview, uh, for the Ethics Board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We'll be right back, just give us a glass of my.
Yeah.
Um, alright, I move to appoint Jonathan Deal to the Ethics Board.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you, sir, for your service. Alright, um, what do we wanna do now, any, any requests?
Four seven fifty-nine.
Liz Rosalyn's not here, well, we'll give you fracking, because Myra's here, um, 'cause that may, Kurt may have some insight into that as well. Uh, so we'll drag his appearance out a little longer. Um, so let's go to the, to number four, the fracking law, so I don't know, Ariana or Stewart, whoever wants to take the reins?
Well, we met with Joe, um, on Wednesday, and, uh, Stuart actually talked to him last Thursday, so that, the version that everybody had originally gotten was what we wanted, um, the definitions included, and then after we met with him, there were a couple more things that we ended up talking about that he, um, changed and sent to us. Um, I don't know if everybody got the email or not, but Stuart forwarded it as he, like, uh, he could.
Couple of, the changes on the, on the, on the second page, um, tightening up the. Excuse me. Make it.
Oh, 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 that's what we wanted to do, right.
Make it more difficult to get around it.
Yeah, everybody has a hard copy, um.
Oh, separately from our novels?
Yep.
Yeah, I think it was on the T L.
Ariana, do you have a next one?
You can hit my. Yeah, no problem. Is this online?
I did go, I did not go line by line by the two that we have, um, however, this one will be on top of line tomorrow.
I had a second.
The change was a very small change, though.
Yeah, but change was minor, and it, it was increasing effectiveness, not decreasing it.
Ariana, are you and Stewart satisfied with the provisions, and with what is, what has been proposed?
I am, um, Stuart had had more comments, so I don't know if you, if Joe did everything that you wanted, but from what I saw, it looked like everything we discussed. Yeah, I would like to set a public hearing on it.
And, and I think, I think that, uh, it's gonna take some serious looking at, because there's a lot of different proposed statutes out there, including the three that they're talking about tonight at the town, I think.
Yeah.
And then other ones, uh, throughout the state, so, uh, this will be good to have the moratorium to give us time to, to really nail down what would be best for us. And, uh, so I'm, I'm in favor of setting a public hearing also, on, on the moratorium part.
Well, we, um, we, well, I guess formally we should have the motions, secondarily we have the conversations, so did you wanna move something?
I'm, I'm.
I'd like to move, I'd like to move the motion to set a public hearing on, uh, the moratorium and pr- on a prohibition of certain natural gas and/or petroleum exploration, extraction activities, and transportation or storage of related waste. Um, for, what is it, October tenth is our next meeting? Um, October tenth at seven thirty PM?
I'll check then.
Actually, we'll have to be following the, there's already a public hearing scheduled, I think, so we'll have to be following that at public hearing.
Just set it at seven forty-five, we're doing fifteen-minute increments, because they always last longer. We can always start a public hearing late, but never start one early, so that's the best way to do it.
Because we have one already.
Yeah. Um, so further discussion on the law, I mean, I have some, uh, Sally, second.
Sally, second.
I have some, some questions, but is there any other comments?
I, 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 do you have to have the clause in for hardship exemption? Because it seems to me, it basically.
The hardship one isn't in the one you have for you.
Yeah.
I don't think you're, you won't find one in the one that's before you.
It's in the one that was in the package.
No, 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 it was not in the packet, it was in the packet, but then there was, that was exactly what we wanted taken out.
I, I asked the attorney, why, if we're trying to prohibit this use, then why would we, you know, have a waiver of it? And, uh, it wasn't a good answer to that, I thought, so it's not in there anymore.
If you're banning something, you don't ever want the door open.
That's true, meanwhile, the, the other type of moratorium boards, considering that, that is probably a necessity, but these are different types of, they are different types of moratoriums.
And, and when you get to the final statute that we'll vote on eventually, then there might be a reason to have a waiver in there, maybe yes, maybe no, but I don't see any reason to have a waiver about this topic.
I was wondering too about that in this case.
Um, there's a couple questions, why, uh, maybe I'm just not remembering something, but why, why do we have moratorium language in here? Because it just seemed to me, if we took that out and just made it prohibited, wouldn't it just ban it outright?
Well, I think that.
Is there a reason to have the moratorium and a prohibition?
Well, I think the moratorium is because we think we're gonna have a more extensive statute in the future, and this gives us time to have the extensive statute, which will be more than this. This, this gives some key definitions, so that it's clear what the statute will be about. But I mean, the one that I handed out a month or two ago, in the packet that, one of the model ones from the attorney from Ithaca, uh, as you can see, is, is a lot longer, and that, and that had to do with the theory on, uh, banning it under zoning. But then there's other topics we may wanna consider with this, or in parallel laws by the time we have the final recommendation, so it's a moratorium while we come up with what we hopefully use as a perfect law in the future.
I was wondering what, I'm, maybe I'm not, um, seeing a potential, but can you envision a way that if we just made this law permanent, could fracking happen in the village? Because that, it, it bans all permits and approval, it bans everything that someone would need to do, I mean.
It, it may, uh.
Do we need, I guess, do we need a, a bigger law, is what I'm asking?
Well, I think we, I think.
I think we need a bigger law, and I think it's important that we do this tonight, because the sooner that we get something on the books, the sooner we are protected as a community against this, regardless of what it is, and we, I mean, we've put this in front of the board many times now, in terms of the moratorium versus having a straight-up ban, and talked about how we're gonna do that through zoning, so I don't know.
I guess that's what I thought our conversation was about, merging the multiple laws into one. I thought we were seeing a ban.
That's never, that's never what it was about, it was about having three separate laws.
Alright, up to three separate, there's three separate theories.
I think, Ariana, to be fair, this has been so confusing procedurally, that I think the mayor's question is a very problematic.
First, first, what we wanted was a moratorium to do before we do anything else. Um, because we figured we would do that in the meantime, while we worked on these other things, and it would be something that would happen faster.
Right.
And then Stuart and I went to NICOM, and we heard all about the zoning, and, uh, the kinds of laws that we could put into place regarding the roads, road and infrastructure, and the damages, and things like that. So we said, well, let's do, it, it seems like it'll take us an equal amount of time to get these laws on the books as it would to get a moratorium on the books, so we decided we wanted to go with that instead of doing the moratorium, let's do a straight-up ban. But what we, but because it was, because that's what we had originally said, that's what we had gotten, was the moratorium, and then, and because we had wanted to set one public hearing for three separate laws, it got confused that we wanted three separate laws rolled into one for one public hearing.
That's, okay, great.
Is, is what went on. Um, but, a- and, and I think having hard copies would, made it difficult, um, because it's, you know, not in a workable document on, uh, computer, um.
So you had a multiple versions of everything.
Right, so we just had, we just had a lot of different things flying around, which is what made it confusing.
This is one of three theoretical laws. So this is the first of three theoretical laws?
No, this is completely separate, what we actually wanted was those three laws, and we are going to have those, but this is what we're doing first, because we already have it, and so we're going with our original plan of having a moratorium while we wait for all of our other things.
And when do you anticipate?
Oh, Joe, Joe said he'll have it to us by next Thursday, um.
I think that's optimistic.
And, and we're going, he, that's what he said at our meeting on Wednesday, and we're going to meet with him again next Wednesday at our standing meeting on Wednesday mornings, so that, uh, we can hash out any details before it's due for an agenda Thursday.
The only reason I ask that question is because generally you do not adopt a non-specified moratorium. Generally, a moratorium has to have a fixed period of time. So if it's a reasonable period of time, like within three months, we will have in place the three laws, then, yeah.
I mean, I don't. Two, uh, two week difference from what Ariana said.
Right, from what Ariana is saying.
Well, I.
So the moratorium could be in place for two weeks before the other one.
I, I highly doubt that, I mean, look at how long it took us to get here with this. Do all of you really think that we're going to get these other laws in front of us and not have more conversation?
Okay, then I suggest you put a date on the moratorium.
I, I don't have, you know, a problem with that, six months or something.
Yeah, that's fine with me, I don't have a problem with that either.
When, um, Cuomo put the moratorium on it for the state, he did it until the D E C report came out, so could we base it on until we draft the final resolution of the law, is that like two nebulous to do?
It's probably not reasonable, because then if we never got around to it, it would always be in effect, and.
Yeah, but we're gonna get it out to it, and if we did it, we want it to always be in effect.
I know, but I think it would be easier to some, for someone to fight that, if, you know, because you're kind of self-serving. So I, I would rather put, you know, that it'll affect it in the last, for a period of six months at the end.
Okay.
Okay, that's fair.
You can extend it more, you can go to extended, you have a time.
Is it important, uh, is it important to put in into any section of this? Um, what is, what's happening next, and who's doing, you know, of, of, like, the basic work plan for what happens during the moratorium? Or is it not really necessary?
I don't think it's necessary to put it in this local law, but I, I think amongst ourselves, we ought to know what the plan is, because I think it's going to be, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna be looking at at least three separate theories to say nothing about choice of language, and, uh, so we ought to, maybe Ariana and I should, you know, be given a time to get language before you, which will be way before the time you're gonna vote on it, because it's gonna take a while to digest this, because it's fairly technical stuff.
I think six months is very fair, and that, if we can get it done sooner, that would be.
Well, I mean, I, I would, I would think that we would like to, you know, say, within a month, have suggested language before you on, on the statute, so then you can choose how fast you wanna do it.
Yeah.
Unlike, um, the conventional zoning moratoriums that communities consider, this one, of course, is based on outside factors, whereas our moratorium may consider the zoning and, and, and other towns, uh, and villages and cities that have more terms of zoning, uh, it's largely entirely in their own control, what, how they want to zone, of course, it's its own will. In this case, there's outside factors, and, um, as, as Brian mentioned, with, um, other Department of Environmental Conservation, not yet completing its work, it's sort of a bit of a moving target, so.
So I think that that's why we need the three laws in place, but on the other hand, you know, too many. you know, too many communities and too many boards adopt moratoriums and then.
Flood flood.
They're gone.
Yes, and then they're they're in some they're in some.
I think that we understand that we have to have our work done no later than six months, that would be wonderful, cause I know that means we'll do it in three.
So our our target date to have the language before you for discussion will be the the last meeting in October.
Good. The uh the last comment I had is um wondering if we might amend section four and add a sentence to the penalties. Follow the uh uh some other section of the law to go to make every day a violation continues a separate penalty. So ten thousand dollars a day, instead of ten thousand dollars flat.
I just don't know if that'd be considered.
I'm not opposed.
Too too severe, but I mean, I.
It's in a building, it's in a building code now, and it's held up, so I don't know if it would have transferred though to this.
With those kinda numbers?
Um well, I would imagine the numbers are proportional to the offense and the ability to pay, so.
I don't I I guess the worst case would be that if if they found that to be objectionable in a lawsuit, they have the severability in here and
Yeah.
and they would just take that out and go with the.
Well, I guess the actually, I guess the worst case is someone violating this law in the village and having to have a multi-day fine is the worst part of the worst case scenario, I suppose.
Right.
Well, so, okay, hold on though, if we make these changes and we we have to write, we can't set a public hearing today.
Well, you make them right now.
As the the local law as amended.
Public hearing, Ariana, so you're safe.
Yeah, right up until we all vote to set the public hearing.
We don't wanna check that kinda thing with Joe.
If you like, it's not that important to me, I mean, I'm not, I don't wanna hold up the law to wait for that, you know?
I mean, I'm not.
I mean, I I like the idea, I just.
I don't think it would be upheld in court, quite frankly.
We could have talked about it, yes.
I think this is probably what's forward, you can go.
I just thought about it right now, actually, it didn't occur to me before. But you know, it's something else we could add to the final law, this is only a six-month law.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, okay, cool.
Six, we got time to figure out a plan.
Cause I would be all for that.
That's a whole, that's a whole lot of research to do.
We're gonna need a fee that's high enough to be really significant, it's worst case scenario anyway. And uh so. Alright, so let's break that, so I guess, uh is there any changes we need to make to the motion? I don't think so.
Other than that they're going for a six-month one.
As amended, just tack that in.
As amended.
So we'll just put at at the last sentence and will last for six months. From the day that it was filed in the Secretary of State's office.
How would just da- data becomes effective, cause that's defined in this another section anyway.
Well, it says it'll be effective on the day it's filed in the office of the Secretary of State. Or you could add to that and.
And will last for six months after it's filed.
Alright, any other discussion?
Thereafter.
All in favor?
I'm.
Nice job.
I think it'll quite as long as the chicken mall, but it was getting closer.
Our our honest likes to be thorough, that's all.
We come out with better products if we talk about this one. Um it's true.
I agree.
So nu- numbers two and three are really, I uh I've kind of I misnumbered it uh when I was adding them. They uh really, three is really a subset of two, um but it is, there's a couple of memos and and things. This law um is a little bit technical, and it's kind of hard to see what the point is necessarily at first, uh so that's why I asked Kurt to be here. Basically, y'all are are basically familiar with SEACER, you know, something goes before the planning board, uh and.
Are we talking about critical environmental areas or SEACER?
SEACER, yeah, critical environmental areas, that is a subset of the SEACER conversation, yeah.
Okay.
So I'm.
Well, they're separate items.
Yeah, it was an accident that they were separate, they should have been all filed into one. Um so the 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 big picture is, is that, you know, when something goes, uh you do something in the built environment, um it's some kind of action under SEACER. Um and Kurt, please correct me, cause I'm 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 probably just remember this. There's a specific list of of type two actions that the state defines that basically are the bare, like you don't really have any environmental review. Or the the minimal environmental review guarantees it. And then there's the type one actions, which guarantee the maximum environmental review. And then there's a whole bunch of other ones where we have to make decisions on which one it is. There's a provision of the state law that says that local governments can make their own list of type one actions, which must go before the planning board and and have um the hardest look, I think is actually the legal phrase, um. So we had, we had this already on the books, we had only two or three things on there, a couple of things about blasting, um you know, the kind of generic things. So one half of this law is is the fact that we can add um actions that are not currently type one actions to a local type one list, and then it gets the maximum environmental review from the planning board. Kind of like what we did with the one and two family houses earlier in the year, that that type of 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 look. The second piece of this little puzzle that that we put together, we put together was that um in a separate section of the state law, local governments are allowed to create things called critical environmental areas. And so I apologize, I was using too much jargon, I'm dumbing it down too much, let me know, but. Um and a critical environmental area is basically a point on the map, you physically draw where it is, and and anything that would impact that area um has to get a heightened up overview, usually like the environmental board or environmental commission has to weigh in on the planning board decision, and it it leads to the ability to overturn the planning board decision through lawsuits much more easily, like if they don't take into account the critical environmental area, you can have a proposal overturned in court. So what this does is basically put two and two together and say if one defines a list of critical environmental areas kind of as broadly and specifically as I could figure out, and makes every single one of those critical environmental areas on our list of type one actions. So that now that at the end of the day, if this is designed right, um anything on this list would have to go before the planning board to make sure that it's protected, including um historic properties, including um uh wetlands, including um trees, I think, I can't remember if I put a certain age or diameter or breast height, but I thought if we protect buildings of fifty years and older, you know, at least you have to check into the planning board before you touch something that old in the community, and you know, yeah, on and on and on. It doesn't ban things that uh from happening in those areas. All it does is throw up a really big red flag, so that every eye in the village is looking in one place as soon as something might impact this. Um and just to anticipate, one one concern I I heard from one person who read an early vet draft, that because of the listing, because of how small the village is, if you drew circles around this, you you'd have a lot of overlap in these various type one areas. Um and wouldn't that be, you know, an excessive amount of protection? Um and we thought about it, and really what it comes down to is, one, this law requires us to trust our planning board, and make sure the planning board is is trained well, because the decision really must rest with them to protect these things. Um and two, if there's overlap, it's not because um necessarily because the law is overreaching, but it's because we have a three hundred some year old village and a small, you know, two square mile, less than two square miles of 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 the earth, and we just actually have a lot that needs protecting, and a lot of it is very close to each other, because everything's built so close to each other. So other than that, I I wasn't, I didn't see any real gaping holes, but if and Kurt, you may have some insight about the impact of this for our planning process that I may not have, but maybe just open up for me.
Question, cause I Ra- Rachel Lagakka brought critical environmental areas up to me like a year ago. And I don't remember why or what what you said, but you convinced me that they were not a good idea.
I I.
And so I was wondering what changed for you that made you think otherwise?
What before was it was so like minimal protections be, you know, meaningless? Be- cause it was basically i- if you just have a critical environmental area, basically all it means is the ENCC has to weigh in on applications.
With SEACER is what gets.
Exactly, combining the two allows us to define.
Doing it on its own doesn't do anything.
It does something, but not as much as you say, just having an active ENCC would. You know, cause if you have people paying attention, it has just as much impact. But this requires, you know, developers to make another stop to a regulatory board to get that in and on top of getting the ENCC's input. So it basically forces the planning board and the ENCC to come together before the project can physically move forward through the planning process, so they can't do an end run around anything.
But the ENCC doesn't have any like regulatory jurisdiction.
No, but they have advisory jurisdiction, specifically in in some places law, and this is one of them, the word, it's specifically mentioned that.
So they would have to like sign off on things?
Well, they'd have to give their opinion, and the planning board can overrule it, but like I said, that could trigger the lawsuit.
In the report.
And that would basically, they have to explain why they overrule the ENCC. And then if say someone sues, saying, no, that was improper decision in court, the judge is actually instructing the law to to take this, that ENCC thing into account, so it actually protects us a little bit in front of a judge, as well as in front of the planning board, if there's something we really need to protect.
Okay.
And this is not the total list, this is what I could think of off the top of my head, you know, we can add to this later, or subtract things if it's something that's really not worth this amount of protection. So everyone bored yet?
I have two questions. Well, in in number four, you have a grammatical problem. And I think you mean in the first sentence, impact any parcel in the village which is identified, not was.
Of that one.
Okay, and the question.
Oh, I saw that too, yeah. It's the very end of the first one.
The second question in the same item, number four, did the village board accept the Hudsonia report?
Yeah.
Then it should not be referred to, it should be the wetland buffer area as as accepted by the village board whenever it did.
That's a good, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's easy enough, I I vaguely remember it was the fall of oh seven or oh six, I mean.
And G. I would take the word proposed out. No law.
Yeah, that one I was honestly that.
No law deals with proposed.
That that section I was a little shady on, cause I know it's something that the communities talked about protecting, but we haven't actually moved forward to.
Say, we haven't actually moved forward on that and um.
Should we take it out, or is or is it not a critical environmental area?
I would love to move forward on it and keep it in.
Yeah.
I I mean, we've been waiting.
The Millbrook Preserve is the Millbrook.
Something's gonna happen there that's whenever we get it done.
Right, but it but it's not actually preserved at the moment, so we need to, you know.
But even if it's not preserved, it could still be a critical environmental area, you know, and that's why I was trying to phrase this.
Right, but in terms of.
So I mean, do you think the land is good or no?
So I leave G in and I would delete G I and G H, uh G Roman numeral two, I just say, the area of public land known as the Millbrook Preserve or Millbrook Forest.
You don't think that's too vague? Like if if you're the planning board, how would you tell them now?
I think I think we should leave one straight.
You, yeah, but you can't say in a law while the protection of said forest is in process. It's either been preceded or hasn't been, so.
Who owns the part that's in the village right now?
Most of it's in the village.
It's in the village.
Some of it's owned by the town, some by the woodland pond, by Peter Beanstalk, by I think Dave Lent, maybe Floyd Niffen. Uh a whole bunch of of, I don't know, has shown interest of some degree.
But.
So I think you aren't just designated as the area of.
Says they're in, I don't think you can.
Yes.
You you know, you really shouldn't be putting.
Agreeing with me, Stuart, that just referred to it as the area of public land known as.
Or what about um would the watershed of tributary thirteen work? The whole watershed catchment?
Yes.
And it cause this doesn't say that you can't build, it says you gotta check in one, you know, an extra time before you do. So if we just have the tributary thirteen watershed, it means everything that would drain into the tributary thirteen. Actually, we just named tributary thirteen and its watershed as a critical environmental area, is what we could do.
Yeah.
Cause that would cover the entire Millbrook and then at least anything else.
Would it cover the entire? Just what I'm concerned about is you can't say something is in the process.
Oh, no, we've moved on from that, we we all agree with you, yeah.
I'm not.
I mean, I I don't, but I mean, also, this doesn't have to, you know, I'm not actually, you know, looking to to rush this to a a public hearing tonight, you know, we can take it. I'll put this to the next meeting, it's fine, um but.
I think it's very good, and I have no problems with it.
So but 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 what do we wanna do, is this, is there, Brian or Stuart, you haven't really said anything about G, is that? I I know it's awkwardly written, I couldn't really figure out a better way to do it.
I I don't wanna, I don't wanna protect something that we don't haven't defined and have the right to protect at this point of view, in other words, if if the proposed Millbrook Preserve is a bunch of parcels, some of which are owned by the town and the village and private owners, it's, you know, kinda tough to say, alright, Dave Lent's property is, now we have it, it's protected and it's this special area, too bad. You know, I I don't think we're at that point yet, perhaps that's what we're gonna do when when they come up with all the pieces fall into the puzzle and they have this preserve, certainly it's important to protect it, but maybe you wanna say that, if you wanna say that now, say the part that's in the village owned by the village.
Right.
That would be fine, I mean, that's fine, but until the rest of it is actually officially something, uh you know, you're you're putting restrictions on someone's la- land when it isn't, hasn't really part of that yet.
Well, isn't that, I mean, isn't that what a lot of this is, or is this just because I'm looking at like the Hudsonia map, and it's a lot of Huguenot Street and.
That's what the zoning is basically.
Yeah, so I mean, so so right now, we're putting restrictions on properties that people own. So if they want to, if you wanted to do something, you know, like I I'm assuming put up a shed or.
Yeah, but that's the they're adopted already, that's the point that that Stuart's making. That's why I said take Hudsonia out, because it's already adopted, we have defined wetlands.
Yeah, but Hudsonia, Hudsonia is part of type one SEACER, no, not currently.
No, not currently, there's there's no wetland protections in the village.
Right.
You designated wetlands, that was the question I asked. Has the village board in the past designated wetlands beyond that which the state.
The E C, right.
Right, and and by accepting the study of oh six or oh seven.
We designated that.
But but it was designated, but not, but there wasn't anything set to protect it.
Correct.
Just because it was designated, there was no law on the books protecting it.
The point, the point is you don't have a reference in Hudsonia. The village board either designated or it didn't.
I think we're all getting that.
Says it did, that's all you need.
But there's no official report yet to sh- to show a Millbrook Preserve was inappropriate.
That's the difference right there.
Aaron, you you had a comment?
I think we're talking about something else.
Yeah, cause Sally, yeah, no, because what I'm saying is, we're not just doing like what, like it makes no difference really whether we're including Bill Millbrook or not, because it's still a land where there's where.
There's wetlands.
Where there's wetlands or whatever the case may be, so whether it's owned or not, I mean, we're already including properties that are owned by people. So whether whether it's it's some by us and some by other people, I mean, we're also including people's properties that aren't ours at all.
Missing, I think you missed it.
No.
I don't disagree.
No, no, we're talking about something else.
What we have, we have within.
Passage, I think I I think I get it.
Yeah.
Have within the village part of the Millbrook Preserve.
Okay.
That you wanna protect. It does not matter what part the town owns, or what part.
Well, doesn't matter what part of town owns, but it's not a jurisdiction.
That that area known as the Millbrook Preserve and perhaps Jason's suggestion of calling it tributary thirteen and would be a better, a broader description. That's all you wanna say.
So here's I think, if I think I get where you're talking about, because it's actually, you're not kind of, it's like sequential. So all 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 and all land use protections are invariably a restriction on the right to use land, that's what they are, I mean, that's the purpose of them.
Right.
Sally, I think, is saying the legitimate use of that restriction is after a public process where you vetted a plan or a boundary and established a public reason. So therefore, since the village board did that with the study, wetlands are an appropriate use of that restriction.
Yeah.
But without having done a study on our own to establish publicly that this Millbrook Preserve means X Y Z, is an illegitimate use of that restriction.
But but I think what what we're, but Brian's taking it to the next step, which is saying that it doesn't matter whether we call it that or not, because if we say wetlands, it's included in the wetlands here.
Mm-hmm.
So it's gonna be part of it whether we call it Millbrook Preserve or don't, or take it out completely. It's it's in there because it falls under the category of wetlands.
Is there any part of of the quote-unquote Millbrook Preserve that that falls outside of the Hudsonia map, or is that, I think that's what.
There are some bits around the edges of the.
It's it's very, I mean, it's pretty minimal.
In the town, we can't do anywhere.
Right.
So but anything that's within, any parcels within the village is all included.
Yeah, but what the town owns is in the village.
Right, that too.
Oh, so then that, so whatever they have, whatever's within our.
Property owner.
Whatever would be Millbrook Preserve within our boundaries is is included in this Hudsonia, so that means.
There's there's some small pieces that are not, but.
Boundary, like there's a wetland processing and the the ring around it.
Right.
So the pale green is not wetland, so that's the part that this would protect, is the spots basically between the wetlands.
Right.
Is what a a separate Millbrook Preserve.
More to the Millbrook Preserve to protect than just wetland.
So all this, so all this outside green is not.
The the pale green, the pale green are the parcels that have a wetland or or buffer, or these are all potential, these are not actual, necessarily.
Well, this is Hudsonia, right?
Yeah, so so the the pale green are the parcels that you can find a buffer or wetland.
Okay.
So it's, so basically, uh but that's not the wetlands themselves.
Now, there's more to the Millbrook.
Brian, look behind you on the photo.
In the village.
You can see the, you can see the, on the photo.
Village owns right there is is exactly the same shape as what's colored in green on this map.
Well, and anything that's light green.
That little tiny pink, you know.
Here, that's a better one.
Rectangular.
Those are the actual boundaries of the wetlands.
Yeah.
Okay, so these are just wetlands.
Yep.
Yeah, those are wetlands and watercourses, so that's why I'm saying.
Oh, I thought, okay, I thought, sorry, I thought the green here.
The pale green in the back.
Cause it says parcels with wetland streams are buffers.
Right, but that outlines the entire parcel, not just the portion of the parcel that has a wetland on it. You know what I mean?
So are the buffers included in the type one seeker?
The buffers would be, yeah, and so, but but because of the mature forest and the other things that the community said they wanna preserve, that's why.
Why don't we just, do, why don't we just say the parcels then, instead of the wetlands?
That's what I was saying, Ariana, fifteen minutes ago, thank you.
We're all gonna confuse each other for a while still. Um.
Sorry.
So we got, so we got a couple of, okay, so.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my bad.
Yeah, I just wanna, I wanna, I wanna, wait, I, cause I think, I wanna circle circle around here. So I haven't, anyone think that that some protection of the preserve is a bad idea? Well, Stuart thinks that it may be not a good use of our, of uh, of the protection, is is that fair to say?
Well, also, I think first thing you wanna do is if we've accepted this study that's. Or this map that's mentioned here that we ought to see the document where they accepted and see what we said about that.
Mm.
The prior board said about that, to have a starting document. And then, as far as, I I I don't think there's anyone who would be against. Protecting the Millbrook Preserve. That can be protected at this point, and I think that's the hard thing to define at the moment.
Right.
Um, and then I have some other comments which are not particularly about that.
That there is a report floating around that is two years old, that has never been presented to this board or passed board. On the Millbrook Preserve, and that should be forthcoming, it has been sat upon and held up by two people, I believe.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's not satisfactory.
We we have definitely tried to get comments and I think we should be able to move forward at this point.
So, okay, so what do you, okay, so there's, I guess, three ways forward, one, we could strip G out altogether. Two, we could uh wait to see what the report says, three, we could define it somehow as a preserve. Or four, we could do something like protecting tributary thirteen and its watershed.
Well, since since it doesn't seem like we're gonna be voting on this tonight regardless, is it possible for us to have the Millbrook Preserve report in front of us? For our next meeting so that we can at least move on that?
I have a copy, but someone will email it to everybody.
I I mean, I was at, I was at the final draft meeting about it, like I, you know, I I don't. I don't need, I don't need a copy, I just need to be able to move forward.
Alright, well, is there any, what else is there about this, or like?
Um, okay, I I have a couple of. Uh, just if if we're gonna, I I'm not, I'm not opposed to to adding additional things to the type one actions locally. I'm not opposed to it, but I think we have to be careful on how we define things because. Uh, when you talk about things like uh. Grading uh or damage to the atmosphere and vegetation, I mean, those things leave a lot of.
Numbers one, two, and three are in the code right now.
Yeah, I I, oh, I I I understand that, but I I'm just saying that that if you're gonna make. You you know, you're gonna give a lot of jurisdiction to some very minor things perhaps, uh, if those are, those words are interpreted broadly. And I think we should think about that. Um, I also, you know, I read all the data that you sent, including the uh memo by uh. Spencer McLaughlin, which I thought was very informative, um, and and are we also talking about critical environmental areas right now?
Yeah, well, all of those are nested within the law, and then the the resolutions embedded in the law also establishes the critical.
So, so, so he uh. Gives this report on the critical environmental areas and and some of it was positive and some of it was negative.
Mm-hmm.
And things that, you know, to be be careful of, uh, but it does say that there's work that you have to do before you actually declare something.
A critical.
Uh, in a critical environmental area, you have to do some preliminary environmental review. And you have to have public hearings, and so, I don't, I don't think it, if you're gonna move ahead to say, these are the new areas, I think. Before you can do that, there's a lot of data you have to have available at the public hearing for that topic to be discussed, and I, maybe we have it and it's in studies, but. That'll have to be put together to do that, um.
Yeah, I figured that this would be, cause they dovetail, you can basically double up the public hearings for both the critical environmental areas and the law, so.
You you can probably do that, but I'm saying it's gonna take a lot of, you know, the environmental research will have to be available, yeah, if you're gonna do that, um. And then, it also. If we go into this process, it might be a lot more environmental impact statements that the the planning board is gonna have to deal with and. Which is fine if it's a major problem, but if it's a a minor problem, then maybe that's gonna cause them some. Time difficulty, so I I think that we have to be careful not to. To to really pick the things that are really important to put in there for the type one action. Um, and and of course, the the examples he gives uh a- about this critical environmental area is that. It's not clear if this is, at this point in time, when he wrote this, whether it would be helpful to have it in there or not. So I don't know if there's more research since then that have shown, well, now this is proven to be a great thing to have, or it's not. Another thing is that you have to, if you're gonna pick out certain areas, I think you're gonna have to define them probably by a surveyor or someone to say. This is the area so that there's no question about it when someone's dealing. Uh, with their application before the planning board, it has to be very specific, this is what what we're talking about, and this is not what we're talking about.
The law, actually, the resolution of the law, um, kicks that to Kurt, we make him do that.
Yeah.
It directs the planner to draw up any necessary.
So, so I'm. Need to be done before, not after, the adoption of of the C E As.
Right, so I I I'm not opposed in any way, and I think that it's important for us to be um. Paying attention to the environmental laws and, you know, and, cause we've seen some things that have happened, uh. Where would, we would have been better protected to have a tighter statute, which we don't have, but I think we also have to be a little careful that. Uh, you know, we're not creating a monster here and that the planning board is gonna have all these applications for some things that maybe weren't intended to. To be major things, but because of the language, they are, so I think we just have to be real careful with that one.
The process in particular that, um, the gentleman you mentioned who prepared that memorandum, that's that's of course, that. The process does involve public hearings and actually requires a a secret review of its own, and also the illustration of these things, so. That would need to be done before a public hearing and a decision by the village board. Um, the type one action, type one actions are of course, that's a a different, that's a different task, is um, is redefining. The our local type one actions, and then there's the designation of critical environmental areas. And um, um, as as the mayor mentioned at the outset, he, it's absolutely true and. And necessary to mention that it it's the planning board who will um, who will take these things only as far as they should go. Um, they're not, um, they're not cornered into an E I S and um, they're not included, it tells them, it identifies these. These factors for them, and then of course, um, um. A planning board uses its um, its its reason and its uh, um, then its um, its advice of. Of staff to then take the secret process as far as it should go for an individual action. In fact, what the D E C did in in altering, amending its um, uh, secret implementing regulations was. They removed what C E As, critical environmental areas used to do, which is elevate an unlisted action to a type one automatically. So again, there's a, there's a good system of checks and balances, it alerts the planning board or the lead agency, whoever that may be. That a project may have something that they need to focus carefully on, but they're not cornered into um, uh, time consuming or costly. Um, decisions, they still retain their decision-making authority.
And this isn't meant to replace other environmental targets, cause it doesn't, it doesn't ban anything, I mean, you know, we've banned fracking, we've banned wetlands development at all. It just raises the bar on like the baseline of what we're gonna review.
Well, I think including the historic properties and property that's under conservation easement is very important, I think that was a very good addition.
I just sat with Matt and drew around everything that I thought people would get upset if we paved over.
On the critical environment, environmental areas, it would seem to me. That that could be addressed by the list. Of those areas that are designated as critically environmental areas, rather than going through a lot of verbiage.
Uh, yes, I mean, they should be illustrated on the on the map.
That could be a part of the.
You mean, just just put all critical environmental areas in the law and that the list is separate somewhere else?
Just to say C appendix. C appendix A for critical environmental areas.
Living buildings that are are historically designated to be attached to star.
I always find laws that are simpler to read are more easily followed.
And more easily upheld.
And I believe that C E As have to be designated just by the resolution, so we don't even need the law.
You two have, you two have worked on this, but.
Yeah, and Joe's seen it and Kathy.
Um, had the planning board had opportunity to.
To weigh in on it?
The who?
The planning board.
No, 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 I, um.
Since they have to implement this.
But what, but what, what we should, this is what I was thinking is, uh, because we need to send this to the county and the village planning board.
Mm-hmm.
So I wanted to get consensus from, you know, this table. On what we felt was best before we sent anything onto them, rather than the other way around, and then thinking that if we get good comments back from the village and county planning boards. Incorporate them in a new draft, and then put that before the village board, uh, to set up, to discuss setting up a public hearing, so that, between the research and the referrals, we.
Before you send it to the county, I'd make the changes that we've talked about.
Oh, no, absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is is there a buffer requirement uh automatically if it's a. Type one, or is the only buffer in there the one you put about the five hundred feet from the center line of the Walk Hill River, is that the only actual buffer that's in here?
D E C has buffers already, I mean, they have rules.
For the freshwater wetlands?
Uh, for.
Oh, and for.
By making it type one, does that create a particular buffer, or is it just whatever the tax dis- designation description is of that parcel, that's the only thing? That that's affected.
We have no jurisdiction over twenty feet from the river edge, I believe, Lou told me.
That's the village law.
That's the village.
Any stream or or.
You know, so that if if this came up with the shade tree commission.
The the D E C, depending on the classification or the significance, to put it.
When they wanted to plant trees, the question was, could they pull, they wanted, remember where the bank was eroded?
Yeah.
They wanted to fill in.
Oh, that's a different, no, no, that's a different.
The D E C said, they have a true picture.
That's uh, you can't disturb water, so I mean, so for, for the same reason, we couldn't. Uh, take like the trees and brush from Southern Truth Park and just toss it in the water.
Right.
Because the D E C will come down for, basically, you can't throw anything in the water, but that doesn't mean they protect it from development. You can still build right up to the edge of the Walk Hill River, and the D E C won't say much of anything.
Well, no, because you've got.
No, well, and again, there there's actually.
No, that won't stop them.
It gets fairly technical, in other words, there are different types of permits required for different types of actions, and there are, is in New York State, there are, there are points at which. Um, it would be very difficult to get approved, um, large development on.
Well, I was referred to go with this, which is the catch-all protection. If something else isn't already there.
Right.
In other words, just because the D C says, you can't do this. Just in case, I think the buffer is needed, and I think it's a good addition.
In fact, one of the best examples is New York State has held on to.
See, I was going to add wet.
It's twelve point four acre fresh water, freshwater wetlands, um, every one of our surrounding states and and even those that we think of. I mean, even in Pennsylvania where fracking is is going on, um, vigorously right now, um, they regulate, the state regulates. Wetlands down to one acre, so, New York is a little bit unique, they set a, and to. To give you an idea of how far it goes back, twelve point four acres is of course, a five hectares if I'm pronouncing that right, so it was. At the time that we thought we were going to change the metric system, which was in the mid seventies. That never happened, they held on to the twelve point four acres, and that's why in New York State, you see so many local freshwater wetlands regulations.
I think it's a very good job.
Thank you. Any other um, advice on this one, before I have another draft? Get it back to us versus refer to the. No, I'm gonna bring, I'm gonna bring back a second draft to our next table, cause I'd like the board to refer, the board has to refer to the planning board, so hopefully I'll get, I'll nail it down.
Oh, you'll have that all ready?
I'll just, I'll just take these revisions, but you have some.
I guess, you know, uh, um, not to disagree with you, Stuart, but um.
Oh, no.
What?
Not again.
But uh, but I think, I think, you know, some of these things that talk about topography and grading are very important, and. I would like to encourage the planning board to look into them more.
Well, I was talking about the degree, not that they're in there at all, but, you know, tighten up definition, I mean, if you have. You know, a, you know, a small grading problem, then you don't wanna have everybody spend six months dealing with it, but if you have, you know.
Well, I would love to move towards something that is more like a uh, permaculture community, which if you're not. Familiar with what permaculture is, it's the idea of working with the land as it is, and having things like. Um, bio swales for water retention and like uh, waste, you know, better drainage, um. I I actually, did, did you see that thing I sent you about that parking lot, did I send it to you? I'll send this to you, but maybe I sent it to you, but there there's like, there's all these different things that we can do to work with the ecosystems that are already in existence. And I think that, you know, looking into those things to the utmost is the only way we're really gonna get there.
Okay, but I'm gonna say.
So I think, so I just think you should leave this in here. It's really what it is, because I think that this is.
Term for for a concept that's been with us for so long, and yet municipalities still struggle to adhere to, in other words. Parcel boundaries are the unfortunate feature that you don't see until you look at a map that contains them. Then you see the challenge, and and again, you're right, it's 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 community self-determination. And a good planning board appointed by the village board in order to do what you said, which is work with the land, not against it, and again, a lot of that. A lot of uh, poor development happens because of the parcel boundaries, and the owner or developer looking at it is simply looking at that as an island.
Mm-hmm.
That may be a generalization, but it's been, it's been true for for a lot of.
Yeah, let us know, I agree.
Nice and say, everybody's motivation is different. Okay, and from the standpoint of planning, you know, it seems to me. That you go from A to C, and then you, once that's all established and everybody's content, then you go. To D to G, but to go from A to G.
No, you still have to get rid of G.
What what alphabet do you work with?
No, you know what, no, I mean, you know, you can, part of this is cultural change. And a view of philosophy.
Mm-hmm.
And education, and. And part of it also is, not everybody looks at the world the same way, so you have to be very convincing. To get people to start looking at the world, world the way you might like it.
Agreed, um, so.
Did I say that correctly?
I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
You had the, you had the thoughts on this, Brian?
Yeah, so, is Hudson, like the wetland boundaries in Hudsonia, the buffer and the wetlands. Will that be the only critical, and then I guess what we'll call the Millbrook Preserve, I guess, I'd like, I it'd be cool to be able to see. What all the, what the the final boundaries will be, like if we can like get a blank map and just like.
We can see, we can see the wetlands at least, uh, cause I also, at another time, just search your email, cause. You all, I believe, have the full report from Hudsonia that explains all these maps.
Right.
So if, as a reference, if you're curious, I'm sure if you don't, I'll send you the copy.
But if we, cause because I, I mean, obviously, I was under the impression that the part, the first map we had.
Right.
Is what would be protected, whereas the second map is significantly less space. But there's gonna be a buffer around that space, just not as large as what's on the first map.
Well, yeah, what's on the first map, the pale green.
So, so what about these like little circles around?
Well, look at, look at the the legend.
Yeah.
Right.
The crosshatch is the actual wetland, the ring around it is a, is a suggested buffer, and the other, the pale green color is just, shows you which parcels. Have either one of those.
So, so is there gonna be anything outside of, I I understand the the pale green won't be included.
Right.
Outside of the the wetland buffers and the wetlands. Are there gonna be other things included in the critical waters?
Uh, historically designated property, uh, the wetlands, the uh, the s- uh, the streams, which we're already, we already protect in the village, we can't build within twenty feet, but this. Means any impact would also be a critical action, obviously, the river, the conservation easements, um. And then the catch-all F, any property with any contractual, you know, blah 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 blah, you know, if we need to get on a property for some. I'm not sure what else would be, oh, did the trees not get in there?
The.
I'm gonna put that out.
So we might put.
I did have, I did actually also have that, the trees, cause I didn't know what, how to measure that diameter, or press type certain.
Sure.
Cause the shade tree commission, you'd think would like to have an inventory of the most, the oldest trees in the village, and you should protect them, so.
Green to do with that.
Yeah.
So would it, so would it be possible to put together like a a visual map of this, or is it, is it gonna be?
Have to, we we actually have to before we could.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
We'd have to, we we actually have to before we could do anything, cause Kurt said, we by law, we have to have a map that shows it all.
Okay, so I'd be, I'll I'll feel.
Comfortable with that.
More comfortable with this one, I can just, you know, see everything all together, and I think.
I just wanna clarify, cause I would be much more comfortable if we stopped referring to Hudsonia. And I'm going to ask the planning.
The village that owns that.
The village wetlands.
I'm going to answer to check back and make sure that the wetlands were adopted. Were they in the north, old, okay, so you know they were, and to see if any other.
It would have been in the fall of two thousand and six.
Wetlands or endangered.
Oh, who that, October two thousand and six.
Yeah, but but since since you went out of office, if any other have been added or included.
Yeah.
The maps is doing what you're gonna say.
Sure, and actually, five years is actually, a lot of times a lot of delineations done as part of development plans, they they need to be redone about that.
I think.
So you would do that and then.
Better five.
Yeah.
The wetlands that were accepted by the board. That day.
Yeah, oh six and then January sixth, oh seven.
And and since.
I just have one one other comment in Spencer McLaughlin's uh memo, he does call attention to the board at the time. That any property owner who's in this, one of these CEAs, the environmental areas. Would have cha- standing to challenge the agency, presumably the planning board. Uh their decision, so hopefully that's also not gonna open up an arid tidgeous society of getting our planning board into a lot of Article seventy eights.
Well, I'm limited and um and exactly, my understanding would be you could, that the process the village board goes through would be subject to challenge. Um again, CEAs, because they no longer even elevate an unlisted action to a type one action. Um if the board literally said it's a C E A and therefore we're going to deny an application, I I agree, that would be quite vulnerable to.
Uh, I I think it just says that if if this is in the C E A and the planning board makes a decision on the matter. If someone's in the C E A. They can challenge it, be but just by for because of the fact that their owners in the C E A.
You mean like challenging an assessment to get out of it, or challenging the project decision?
No, in other, in other words, having standing to, in in, in other words, the. Article seventy eight is for people who are have standing to challenge what a governmental agency has done. And by putting in the C E A, then anyone who is located within that C E A is automatically given standing. To challenge it. So I I hopefully that's not a problem, but I could foresee if it's not a popular decision by the planning board that they'll. You know, right or wrong, that they'll be in court and you know.
I could discuss it with village council, but my understanding is that Article seventy eight, some people. Have broad standing to file an Article seventy eight or.
Well, they'd have to have standing to show how they were affected by it, but uh you know, I guess the layers can find a way to do that.
No.
But that.
But Kurt, I mean, the the wetlands were designated and accepted by the village in two thousand and six.
The study was adopted, but you didn't.
So it would seem to me that that's when you would have had an Article seventy eight of people objecting to the designation, then you can't do it after the, long after the fact.
It's not objecting to the designation, it's it's saying there's a matter before the planning board.
We can.
It happens to be located in the C E A, so the planning board has to take that and a lot of other things into consideration when they decide, so they decide and just by the. Fit uh the fact that someone, a neighbor is in that, gives them standing to ch- challenge the decision of the planning board, whether they made it on. Based on the C E A or not, I'm I'm just saying it's, it just gives other possibilities for litigation and hopefully that won't be a problem.
We can check, we can check.
If you like, I mean, really like, I mean, that that's what I'd suggest, because I'm not aware of a lot of cases where um.
Yes.
Yeah.
Where they, where Article seventy eights were thrown out because you didn't live close enough, you could live simply in the same community or.
I just, it, I I I don't mean. I guess I'm just, it's another group of people that'll have the ability to to litigate a matter and do we care about that? It's a good question.
Yes, I I I think um hopefully I can answer the threshold question of whereas, is it giving people standing that wouldn't otherwise have it, I think is your question.
App- app- apparently, that's that's what I get from this memo, but.
Next, thank you.
Good night.
Um, any other questions? I don't, I mean, I don't need a vote, I just needed the feedback, that's all.
Alright.
So I'll get a second draft as soon as we can, and it is nine, do we wanna take a five minute break?
Sure.
I would like to stretch my legs.
What are you doing now?
I'm alright.
Would, would it bother anyone if we took a five minute break?
What?
I think it's a good idea.
Alright, well, we 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 do it, so let's see if we.
I would go with.
I never.
Stop your.
The board asked for, so, oh, no, I didn't, yeah.
Don't get too excited.
I bet.
Uh, alright, we're good whenever you are. Um, so Kurt, the last thing, but um. The Safe Roots to School grant is a weird, a weird grant and have been a kind of a strange process. Um, for some reason, and and myself, Kurt, Mark Blower, Blue and Rich were in a meeting. Uh, we realized that no, there's nothing requiring the board's approval, nothing requiring the mayor's signature. So, I mean, we don't actually have to approve anything to apply it for this grant, which is strange.
Not before.
Not before we accept the money, but yeah, um, so.
But in order to accept it, the board votes?
Mm-hmm, something like that.
And so, so what what will the uh duties of the board be when they accept it, is there anything they have to do?
Well, we've we've, let's hold off on getting there yet, because we may not end up at that point.
Okay. Okay.
Um, so the, there's uh restrictions on the grant, uh it has to be, uh or was, is it a federally funded highway or was that not, ended up not being true?
It's a federal highway administration, um.
In partnership with the school district about walkability to schools, so.
And administered by the state DOTs, so it it's one of those federal programs that's administered by state agencies. And um Safe Roots to School is a um is a program that that's part of transportation enhancements. Unfortunately, at least in my view, um in July, uh Congress voted to eliminate Safe Roots to School as a discrete, specific program. Under transportation improvements, um, I won't get into the details of why, but I think it was a sad outcome, in any case, this is now the. Um, the new transportation fund which provides uh grants, it has been authorized through nearly the end of twenty fourteen, so just over, just over two years.
So, when you say it's still called Safe Roots to School?
There's there's the, it's red, yes, they've rescinded, but our application is is coming in, in other words, we, Mark Blower, our grant specialist, had um um had. Informed us about the application, um there wasn't, this was uh at the beginning of of this month. So it was um, it there was not too much time, but the, he felt that we could, we could make it. So, working with Mark, uh myself, Blue and Rich Ruth, um identified immediately stretch of sidewalk that would fit with the program. Now, it, as it turns out, I met with the Transportation Implementation Committee on Monday night, and of course, they they said, well, what about the priorities of the two thousand and eight adopted sidewalk master plan? And um, I, we discussed it, and then later, the next, the next day, I heard from a member of the committee who was not speaking for the committee, but. Ultimately, they said, yes, this stretch that we're thinking of is indeed identified as in poor condition. It may not have been everyone's first choice for a segment, but it leads from, uh it's along Platicille Avenue and it leads to the middle school. So that, of course, was one of the um program requirements that of course lead to a school. Um but the two thousand and eight sidewalk master plan, in in my view, is still something that should be um implemented and then given proper regard.
Okay, so there's nothing for us to do?
Not now, it's just that the the knowledge, the to impart the the knowledge that that we have been working on it, the deadline is one week from tomorrow. Um but mercifully, there aren't a lot of procedural requirements to apply. On the other side, there will be um uh requirements as far as acceptance of the funding and the strings that come along with it, which I. Very much embrace, but of course, it it's um, it's important for me and others to to convey to the village board what those, and to the school district, what those obligations are.
And what are they?
Basically, yeah, of course, and you're right, getting to that, it's a a commitment to walking, encouraging safe walking and biking to school.
That's.
As you may know, the two elementary schools currently have a a do not walk policy, because I think in looking at the routes, they felt that it. It wasn't quite safe enough.
Uh-huh.
This, of course, is the middle school, if I understand correctly, it's six, seven and eight. And um they do have a walking area, we've been working with um the school district, namely the superintendent, the assistant to the superintendent and their transportation um director. Um, so we've been working in tandem, there's only one way to do it, and that's in in tandem with the school district. And I think we're all comfortable with the the philosophy of encouraging safe walking and biking to school. As opposed to eventually, even in the, even in an um environment like ours, having a a no walk policy because there are too many po- points of danger. Um obviously, we wanna remove those points of danger and not not um live with them or accept them. So again, it was, it it's an easy sell to me as your planner, and it's up to me to make sure that I give you um the necessary details, but the. The commitment would be generally to a um to a walking and biking policy and encouraging that and making it safe. Everything from crossing guards to controlled intersections and and future applications, even though they've um rescinded some of the funding.
Is it a match grant?
No, it's completely.
And we're applying for, the 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 cap is five hundred thousand?
That's right.
I think we had, last I saw, four hundred and five thousand and maybe seven hundred dollars worth of improvements up Platicille Avenue.
What, I I mean, I would love to see, um, I mean, like what is the material, what are we talking about, like in terms of environmental, uh?
It's just replacing the sidewalk that we have, the worn out.
Well, but we have, we have the bluestone there, or whatever it is.
Does it go down to the bluestone?
It actually go, it does go to, our application covers from where where Chase Bank just replaced the sidewalk recently in Long Platicille. From there, basically the T room, um up to um the Platicille's intersection with um Mannheim, where the uh where the middle school is, so.
Yeah.
What you have is some segments that have no sidewalks right now, then you have sidewalks in poor condition.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
The bluestone, of course, I I I'm interested to know how how the the board feels, um it's not lost on me that um that bluestone is part of the heritage of of New Paulson, that we've already. Lost a a good amount of it.
Well, we were, we had talked about using that bluestone down on Huguenot Street.
There was specifics in the master plan about that. Yeah.
To fulfill a promise that was made many, many years ago.
Mm-hmm.
To fix those sidewalks, which we are obligated to do because we ripped up.
Yep.
Sidewalk down there to do, what was it, the sewer thing?
Uh, Huguenot Street, the sewer interceptor, uh just north of the heck, the boysport.
So, we have a use for it.
Oh, that's excellent, that's that's good.
Yeah. If there's anything still in condition to be reset somewhere else.
Well.
Was that your question, Ari, just what were, or was it broader thing about materials?
Hopefully, yeah.
Um, yeah, no, well, well, that was part of it, and now I'm, now that I'm have that in my mind, I'm actually looking at. The uh sidewalk master plan, because I believe that it's said, that's exactly what what Sally just said, is exactly what was in here.
Yeah.
Um.
Because wheelchairs and A D A requirements. Bluestone doesn't work.
And strollers and people who aren't walking, watching them walk.
But I guess I was, what I was wondering more about was, I mean, I know that there are some sidewalks that are done with like, you know, the black top. Um, and I don't, I, we're not doing that, okay.
No, like the concrete, the the set concrete with the lines, yeah, no.
Okay, cool. Um, beautiful, the other piece that I was thinking about, um, in terms of doing this, and I don't know exactly what is included in that four hundred thousand dollars, but. Um, and how much the sidewalk itself actually costs, but uh. Well, yeah, I I know it's a lot of money, I remember how, we've had conversations with Blue about it, I don't remember specific numbers, but I remember it was a lot, um.
I know, I should have put this in, did they not put this in the packet?
Is this your dinner?
Um.
Yeah, I think this is it, uh. Yeah, this is the.
But there's.
Yeah, you can pass, we can pass that on, I.
There's also, um, I mean, what inter, uh, what along the way of complete streets can we include in this? Um, you know, is there gonna be bike lanes included, is it gonna be like, yeah, I mean, I know you're very familiar with that, that concept, so.
Yeah, um actually, I, we may be able to paint or or use markings, what we're up against is a is a deadline of next Friday for.
Gotcha.
A grant that I think became aware to all the most municipalities only several several weeks ago.
Right, right.
And part of it was, I mean, we had heard the phrase earlier this summer, but because we're waiting to see what Congress would fund there. I think was the reasons that the application came out late.
Um, I'm trying to fig, I'm trying to figure out whether it's the last of the the continuation, what they've been doing is instead of enacting a new.
Mm-hmm.
Transportation policy and fund, they've simply been carrying over the old, it's like the debt ceiling, they'll just carry it over. And finally, they reauthorize, so this may be the last application under uh the extensions granted, and I'm, but I'm not a hundred percent certain about that.
I have a a question.
Bolder.
Um, you had mentioned in your description something about that.
I think.
We're gonna get the money if we're successful and they'll give us the money to put in the sidewalks, we have to make sure that. Um, that section of the street is safer walking to school and that might mean crosswalks or something. Um, you're probably by now familiar with the. Terrible situation we have with the crosswalk, I mean, I'm Boulevard, to get across Mannheim Boulevard to go into the. To the middle school, the school and the town and the village were in for months. Um, chaos trying to figure out who's gonna pay for the crossing guard, cause it was thought that one was needed and there was an interim situation. And that, and I read in the paper this week that the town and the school district now are fighting about what's gonna happen next year. So, I say all that because if we, we're not gonna be expected to any, on any of this route to pay for putting a full time. Crossing guard on ladies, are we, cause if we are, that's a big dollar.
Not, not expressly, not, but. Uh, first of all, if if I'm correct in 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 how it's been explained to me, that there is some question about whether that side, whether that particular crosswalk was um. Was placed in a way that um lends itself to maximum safety or not.
Right.
Um, so there, this would require, um, it do- it does not require specifically um crossing guards, we would not, um, it would. The funding would not be rescinded, but crossing guards are 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 noted in the application, um.
I just, hopefully, we're not gonna get into something we hadn't thought about and we're not bargaining for. In other words, the 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 crosswalk that's having the problem now, apparently. They don't think the village is involved with it, the village, the town and the school district are trying to work that out, but if there's another place. Along this route where we got new sidewalks where it could be a problem, then we have to take that into account, because the cost of paying for crossing guard is. As we found out with this other situation, it's fairly expensive.
I understand.
So I I just don't, I I hopefully that's not a problem, but.
Well, it doesn't require the hiring of of specific crossing guards at at specific places, but first I suggest that any place that. That's dangerous for the students to be crossing, has to be addressed one way or another, I don't see how that that situation could just go on and on, um.
You should have been there.
Well. Yeah, that's um, um, I'm speculating now and and and.
Yeah.
So, um, but this should, this should. Crossing guards are, I think some commitment to crossing guards where they're needed, I think that we're uh the school district and the village are required to. Um to acknowledge that at least they're necessary where they're necessary to get the kids safely to school. Um, so I can't say that, I mean, clearly crossing guards are a component of this, but we are not, we are not signing on to hiring. Specific crossing guards at specific places, but there is.
So hopefully the government says, we'll give you this grant, but we want crossing guard here and crossing guard there and you'll have to pay for it.
It it's not that, but we have a commit, but there is a commitment that says that where there's danger, we will address it.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Well, there is a commitment, Kurt, by the Newport Central School District to the Department of Transportation in writing. That commits the school district to providing a crossing guard at Mannheim, and that has been discussed, re-discussed, and I don't know why the town is currently discussing it again.
So that one presumably is taken care of, but are there other ones because of this project, that's why.
The school district obligated itself to a crossing guard at Mannheim, to the Department of Transportation.
Okay, I do wanna be. Okay, and again, I I know as much as I can about that, about that situation, um in in the case of this application, um.
You're saying other extra ones?
This, this is. Well, this is about the encouragement of safe walking and biking to school unless we, unless it, we want it to be, unless the school district. And all the communities that serves the town and the village, um would like to simply encourage more of the no walk, no bike policy. And if that's the case, then this.
I would like to encourage that we contact the triple A to get crossing guards back in, because when Stuart and I were both in school. It was, it was a whole system of crossing guards that the older. People, young people did for. people, young people did for it and it was an honor to be a crossing guard.
Well, it was it was the safety patrol on my corner was right over there.
Yeah.
But this is this is we are making at least a statement by filing this application that we're encouraging walking and biking. If if that's not the case, then.
That's the case.
It's the case.
It's the case. I'm just.
Case closed.
Calling our possible issue.
Case closed. I think walking for young people is a very good idea.
Yeah.
Um, I have a question. What where exactly would this bulb out be and what would it require? The what?
Mm-hmm.
The what? The who? Um, the the bulb out?
The why?
If if you look at, I don't think this is included in our package, but if you look at the what the money would go to, part of it is a bulb out on the intersection of Platicill Avenue and Hasbrook Avenue, which is right over here. Um, and and I I I had sent an email a long time ago and kind of got shot down by a number of people um about putting a crosswalk in because there you could go, there's no way to get from one side of Platicill to the other with a crosswalk.
You're right. There's a crosswalk that's ninety feet wide. Is that the one you mean?
No.
No, I'm talking about.
To go from she's side to our side.
Yeah, there's no there's no, I mean, if you're on Ma- Main Street, you can cross Platicill Avenue. But by the college here where everyone crosses or that stop sign is, there's no crosswalk. Um.
Maria de Valia.
The yeah, the Maria de Valia Memorial Crosswalk. We have to do that. Um, the stuff we have to paint are hot pink, but the second second story. Um, but there's no way for us to get across there and and I was told that that was part of a study at some point where it it wasn't a good idea to add it in, but people are crossing there. So you should give them a safe place to cross there.
I if I were doing it, I would move it up further because the point at which I think you're talking about is so wide that it's that it's not safe. There is a crosswalk at.
Oakwood.
No, there's a crosswalk across across on Mo- is that Hasbrook?
Across cross. Across Hasbrook.
But it's across Hasbrook. It's not across Platicill. That's what I'm saying.
Right.
Oh, I see.
And then further up, there is a crosswalk.
Further up, there is a crosswalk across Platicill, up by Oakwood, but I mean, I I I very purposely walked to the crosswalk and crossed it and I see people crossing all over the place under there.
Well, you hit that corner.
Um, but but you know, even myself, I if I'm on the.
Top edge side and wanna cross over to walk down.
Down Platicill on the cheesy bank side, I cross there.
We walk down to that corner and then jump over.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but what if I'm going up lookout?
Well, even the crosswalk that that exists to to cross Hasbrook is ninety feet. That's almost, um,
You know?
that's that's pretending that it's safe to cross on that crosswalk. That's sort of like walking across a
Pretending crosswalks.
a canyon on a on an old wooden wooden bridge.
Right. Right, meaning we're asking cars to wait the entire length of that crosswalk while people cross it. Otherwise, they're typically not yielded to pedestrians in the crosswalk. Um, and and cars are very, the people in these cars are impatient. I I see it all the time.
That's right, and um also about the the streets, I mean, as um um the mayor's been working on something in this vicinity, which if we had more time, may have been able to be incorporated into uh this grant where the where a portion of the street would be narrowed. Um, the the village streets, especially right right here and surrounding us are extremely wide, um, and some people are respectful of of the amount of pedestrian and biking uh activity and some are not. Um, so that's that's tough to deal with if you're a pedestrian or a cyclist.
Well, one way to narrow them is to allow parking on them.
Uh, yes, actually, yeah, Hasbrook. Hasbrook, we allow parking on both sides, but that didn't stop a terrible accident from happening recently.
Right, you're always trading off here.
No, but if you but what if.
I'm not sure about where the trade. I'm not sure if it's losing out.
If you like parking on one side, you know, it's still it would narrow it somewhat.
Yeah, but why don't I like the idea of squeezing the lanes together. Like I think Jason mentioned on Henry W. at some point, like bringing it in and having.
We get sidewalks on both sides, bike lanes, and then now they're really.
Right.
Yes, you put bike lanes up Platicill.
Yes.
You would narrow the driving lanes.
Does it include bike lanes?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's one way it's.
The application doesn't include um bike lanes because they do, the one thing they do ask for is a lot of technical information about design and um and where exactly the right way begins and ends. So the sidewalks was something that we could get a process in.
Let's get the sidewalks and then.
But remember too that it's because the road is wide, um, we can do striking all at house and we could paint our own bike lanes if we want to.
That's what.
Yeah, there's an. And and are there non-conditions?
We could do it ourselves.
I mean, what about widening the sidewalk? Is that part of this? Is this widen the sidewalk for that?
The standard would be for for I believe it's five feet and of course.
Because two people cannot walk together down Platicill Avenue.
You're an ordinary course.
Sure they can.
If they're holding hands, maybe.
They can walk. My husband and I don't hold hands all the time and we walk side by side up Platicill Avenue.
Well, we do have some interesting, we have some interesting amendments. In other words, we have some sign, everything from.
On the village side you can, not on the teaming side.
On the what?
On the village hall side you can, but not on the teaming side.
Well, that's because people have trimmed trimmed their hedges.
All right, all right. Well, let's talk.
No, except the sidewalk is too is too narrow.
Feel like we're down by the air weather.
Let's just get the sidewalk grant.
Well, but I'm I'm down with the sidewalk grant. I'm just trying to make it the ultimate sidewalk grant. We are, I mean, I would have said all this in a in a meeting about this, but I wasn't invited to them, so I didn't know about them.
Before Kurt says goodbye to us, where are we on the moratorium?
What are you asking?
The other moratorium.
Looking at Toriana?
Asking all of us, where are we on the moratorium?
Uh, that's something that we is we're waiting on Kurt. So when Kurt gets it to us, we'll have it then.
Okay, well, there was a question I asked of of the board. We got last time I was here with the board, there was um um there's property that was annexed and it was mentioned that um uh that the owner had been waiting for a long time after the standardization. So I met with him after I I called him in my initial days of of work, but he said he was busy and he would and he would meet with me when he could. And after I told him I I met with the village board and they were concerned about progress on this, um I called, he met with me and of course I conveyed to everyone that he told me that he's actually satisfied with the current zoning.
Okay.
And um so then, of course, I reported that to all of you um via email message and um and so that the question is what what now? I mean, do we want this this property?
That's right, Kurt, that's not the question, I believe, because didn't we discover that we don't have an option. We can exempt Floyd's parcel from a from a moratorium.
That's right.
So it's a moot point.
That's that's one of the questions we were asking.
Well, well, we can exempt.
But the question is.
Well, yes, but I.
We can exempt the zone.
That's a specific property.
If he zoned it R one, which Kurt's email said is what he wants,
I I asked that in the email.
then you can exempt R one from the.
But then we'd be exempting all.
R one.
Yeah.
Yes.
We'd be exempting all.
And that's not what we wanna do. We're not sure that R one is a good is exactly what we want, so we need to look at all the zones.
And that's not.
At the point of the moratorium and and we ended our meeting, remember, because we were having this same discussion. Um, and we realized that we get everything we want by not even bothering to remove them from the moratorium. Because the whole point is we can exempt things after we're done and the NIFN part and the B three part are the two priorities for when we have the moratorium up. So that was you know.
That wasn't my understanding. My understanding.
It was mine, but it's a moot point. He's in the moratorium. It's not a question. Um, we don't have an option.
We haven't voted on it. We haven't met a hearing.
It's it's not a decision we can make. If we're having a moratorium, his parcel's in it.
Unless we don't have a moratorium for R one.
Unless we. Right, for R one or R.
That's what I'm saying.
I realize that.
And we haven't made that decision yet.
Right.
That's all I'm saying. Is we haven't made the decision whether to exempt R one and then proceed with the moratorium or proceed the moratorium.
Yeah, we 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 did. We did this. We did this decision already at our last meeting. Um, because if we don't, if we don't have the, if I don't wanna, because if we exempt the R one, then basically most of the village is not in the moratorium.
I don't wanna.
So we might as well not have had it in the first place because we could have just done it more.
We have very little R one in the village.
We have quite a bit. Or is that R two I'm thinking of?
You're thinking of R two.
Maybe I'm thinking of R two.
R one is very little.
Close to the residential area. Well, regardless, um, this is something that um is appropriate to discuss when we have a draft of the moratorium law in front of us.
Well, that's where like what where are we with that?
Where's the. Kurt? I mean, that's what I was just answering that 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 we're waiting on Kurt. He's gonna have it to us shortly.
Well, I okay, I I asked. No, I asked the question in my email when when I got your response is do you is this the direction of the board or or do you want to discuss it more? You answered me more discussion.
Kurt, we talked about this all the time and and it's.
Yeah, we sure did. We sure did and we did not come to a conclusion.
No, we didn't.
So, okay, so how about this? Sally, would you like to discuss it now?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to make a motion to discuss it?
I'd like to make a motion to discuss.
So you wanna add this to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
If there seems to be confusion, then let's do it.
Does does anyone does anyone on the board feel like discussing this in addition to Sally's second day?
If it means if it means getting the moratorium in place, I think we are discussing.
I I will second this, but I think that we should.
We're talking about.
Yep, you read my mind. I love it.
What?
Um, I think it's it's nine thirty-five right now. I think that we should not discuss this past nine fifty.
Maybe maybe we should uh put this to the end and finish the rest of the business and see how much energy we have left over because we I mean, we have other things to do.
Well, the motion was made, the motion was seconded.
Yeah.
Let's put
To about.
What do you say? Fifty minute time limit and.
Ten minutes.
Well, the motion's made second and that's when we discuss things. So that's why I'm I'm making my my point.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, apologize.
I need to be here first?
Yes, you do. Um, the uh.
Ten minutes.
Oh, I don't mind. I just wanna know if we wanna do it now or.
No, let's do it now because Kurt is here and let's not make him stay till the end of the morning.
Okay.
And I would I would say that we can try to each have
Though I enjoy fun.
two minutes' worth of comments on it and then bring it to discussion. So so if you have two minutes' worth of things to say, if not, you pass on your time and then we'll just bam 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 move through it and then we'll either have a decision or we'll put it on to another time.
I I like that.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
I can move with Ella.
All right.
In favor? I?
I.
I.
Okay, who wants to go first? Sally, you were the most vocal about it, so would you like to go first?
Yes, and time me, but it's not gonna take me very long. For all the reasons that I stated before,
Okay. Okay.
I felt and do feel that we asked this specific developer to hold on and not do anything until our planner came. We put into place, what do you call it? A what we did. We put into place.
Our word. Temporarily.
Placeholder?
Yeah, a place, thank you. Placeholder of an R one. And it appears to me from what our planner has said that this particular developer wants to pursue R one and we have very, very little R one involved here. In fact, very little R one. So I would at the end of this discussion, move to exempt R one from the moratorium and proceed with the moratorium.
Completed?
I'm done.
Who would like to go next?
I do not think that we should exempt R one from this property.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, from the moratorium because we we have we've said that we can still achieve our goals without exempting it by having by by making it our priority of what we work on first. Um, and I think that uh there's there's a lot of things that we'd like to do with all of the zoning. Um, and I mean, at least I know that there's things that I would like to do with all of the zoning, so I would not like to see any part of it exempt.
Completed?
Completed.
Who would like to go next?
We should.
Stuart, you want to?
Well, I don't have um a lot to say for once, but um I hope that wh- when it's finally resolved that both the developer and the village can come up with something. Because there are many large parcels in in the village and it'd be nice to come up with something uh clever with that parcel so it would really, you know, be really good planning. So I don't know the best way to get that, but that's what my wishes would be at the end of this process.
Very passionate, Mr. Mayo. Would you like to?
I don't think I do. Um, from what I remember, the the discussion we had was the R one zoning was specifically a placeholder and never to be considered as a serious final uh the endpoint.
Mm-hmm.
Because we never had a conversation about whether R one was good or bad. We never had that conversation.
Right.
Because we just put it in there and to have some zoning. And I mean, I I feel for Floyd, but you know, he he just got caught up along with Rich Guassano and some others and just our staffing issues and this shit, the switch over. And um I don't like the precedent of having, you know, exempting a project just because a developer wants to build what they want before we've had a discussion about the community should see in our zoning laws, because you know, the developer shouldn't be writing the zoning.
Yeah.
We do it. Um, and that should be done collaboratively with the developer and I and that's what I was, you know, I think, you know, I think that's the route we go. Um, because we can't exempt just this parcel, um, I think we need to have a conversation with the R one. And I think that there's no reason why we can't have that upfront and then let Floyd go with zoning. We're all confident is what's what's the phrase? Um, Kurt, is the highest and best use? Is it zoning is supposed to achieve the highest and best use of the land in the law? Something like that.
Uh, yes.
That's how you assess it. I don't know about it.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
What law?
So.
Oh, oh, John Martin's time. Come on.
No, that's all. It's just I think, you know, it's I appreciate, but if you know, if Floyd was an out of town, I love Floyd to death, but if he was an out of town developer, I think it'd be less of a question. That we wouldn't, you know, we wait for our process to finish and then the building process. Um, but you know, the democratic process comes first, I think.
Well, I don't think it's them. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I do, I I remind you, I want to take my thirty seconds.
It's okay. I know, I know. This is this is the timing. Okay, um, I feel that.
You should just timekeeper be the timekeeper all the time.
I know, I I mean, now that I just I just downloaded this, but okay, so, um. I think that excluding one group of zoning for the benefit of excluding one's property is probably not the best thing to do. And I do feel I do feel badly for Floyd. I I truly do and but and at the end of the day, he will be able to do what he wants to do with the property. Well, it's like, I mean, depending on how we zone it, but um it it just seems that, you know, if we're gonna consider zoning throughout the village, then we should consider that parcel as well.
Mm-hmm.
And if I I mean, we we had stated that we're going to do our best to make the parcels that stand to be developed immediately, we're gonna try to get those out of the way. And I think that's I think we'll adhere to that and we'll do our best to you know, get through. So I would say along the lines of exempting just the R one, I I I don't think it's a good idea. I would I would add a caveat that I I still hope we stay our course, of course, along the lines of getting getting that section squared away or or finding, you know, whatever we wanted to find the mixed use or however we wanna do it, like that should be our priority and then give him that option and then what or whoever that option and then, you know, go on from there, so. I think uh that's about that. Okay, so we each on our two minutes now. Do we want to move to?
I didn't use my full two minutes. Hey, I used my last thirty seconds.
Well, I was I was gonna I was gonna say.
Talk about anything.
Would would anyone like to add like a thirty minute rebuttal or anything like that?
Thirty.
Thirty minute rebuttal?
A thirty second rebuttal.
Please.
Or would we like to just go ahead and vote on it?
Well, I would I would just like to say one thing. The what precipitated
What did you?
the suggestion for a moratorium, I hate to remind all of us, was not a general concern for the community. The moratorium was a was suggested and was going because some things were going on in development in the community that people felt the moratorium was necessary. That's number one. Number two, I believe that we really did make a promise that we would do something and we have not done it.
Okay, would anyone else like their thirty second rebuttal? Just go, you know, one second to draw up.
I'm gonna start talking. Um, I I that is not at all the reason why I wanted the moratorium. I want the moratorium because I'd like to redesign our zoning to create eco housing everywhere and nothing but. Um, and I'm not I'm not shy about admitting that at all at all. Um, because I think that we're gonna live if we're gonna live, period, on this planet as human beings or any other creature, we need to live in harmony with it. So that's why I want a moratorium so we can revamp our zoning and make everyone build from recycled materials.
Okay, would anyone else like a thirty second rebuttal? It's good, yeah.
I think we're good.
Okay, um.
Sorry.
So do so do we think, does this require a vote to allow the planner to know what steps to take next?
No, I just I wanted this direction. That's what I that's what I wanted. After I found out that Floyd hadn't come to me because he
Okay.
decided ultimately he didn't want the a zoning change. I wanted this discussion to take place and to have clear direction.
Okay.
Well, I don't think you have clear direction yet.
No, but it doesn't need to be necessarily a a vote. I mean, again, it's um as long as I know that the moratorium is the one presented to you is the number one.
I think you better ask for a vote.
Well, I mean, I.
I don't have a problem voting.
I don't have a problem voting. I'm going to move to exempt R one from the moratorium.
Is there a second?
There.
Washing pails? So R one is included in the moratorium?
Okay.
Well, actually, no, I guess all we know is that R one is not, so I'll move to include R one in the moratorium.
Second.
On the table?
All right.
I. Oh, wait, wait, can we amend it? Too late. I was gonna say, can we amend it to? Oh, wait, wait, can we amend it to the, I was gonna say, could we amend it to include it but make a priority?
You're gonna have to make a new motion. The vote's been taken.
Okay.
And we already have that priority from the last time Kurt was here anyway. With Floyd and and the D P W.
Okay. Well, I I mean, I think that we are going to make this a priority, I don't I don't think it really has to, I I don't think you're wrong Sally, in terms of the promise and everything like that, but I think that. We can still, we can still.
You all can do, I wanted to be on record, that's the saying.
You voted.
I agree.
We said we would be and that we have reneged on it, that's all. And I feel comfortable with you all doing, but I'm uncomfortable with making my statement.
I I agree with Ariana too, I don't feel that we've not done anything, I think we're actually just starting to get moving on it, is the thing, that we just have one step first.
Okay, yeah.
But, alright, uh Kurt, I think that's the only other thing we have.
I gotta say. Oh, wait, I was just gonna ask him, since, could we add that Grove thing to the the Grove parking spot to the agenda, do you guys wanna like, you think that's a quick one?
Oh, yes.
What, is that to remove a parking?
It's to remove parking space, did we, I know this was considered for thirty-two, did we need?
It could be a cookie, yeah.
Is that in the code or those parking spaces are not?
The removing of the parking space is not part of the parking plan that we are proposing. This came up afterwards, so I think it's a separate item and would require action by the board.
Okay, um.
Unless you want it included in the parking plan.
You know, truthfully, I mean, if we could, if people would agree to doing this tonight, I would truly love to do it, um. Because I, cuz I have, um.
Wait, before we get into this, I I have a couple more questions about our safer routes to schools.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry, that conversation I feel kind of just transitioned, um, cuz I'm looking at the sidewalk master plan. And recommendation is the sidewalk width of one point five meters, five feet is needed for two adult pedestrians comfortably walk side by side. And all sidewalks should be constructed to at least this width, is that is that what?
That is the specification.
That's what's in here, five feet.
Is it standing, five foot square block basically is, right, well, we're not a block, but that's how you price, you can price it by the.
Well, well, I know it's a five feet. Well, but.
Five foot on five foot.
But I know that five feet is is the specification that we're required to use and that we embrace for this project.
That's the standard.
Okay, cool, I just wanted to make sure, um.
So there were a couple of questions, or was it just that one?
Uh, my minute, yeah, I don't know, um. I felt like there were other ones I had, but maybe we were answered, um, I think.
You got this one, um, anything else for Kurt, uh do we have specific questions about Grove Street?
Yes, so, okay, um.
Yeah.
Did you get the emails?
Did you get, you got the emails, so I mean, I've been walking, I I live on Grove Street now, and I've been crossing that crosswalk every day to get to the Ucat, and.
Yes.
The it is, it is really big, and there's actually a school bus stop that's right on that corner as well, I see young kids, uh maybe elementary or kindergarten waiting on that corner. And I just feel like having that car there, you, when when cars come, um, I guess that would be eastbound? No, westbound, westbound on Main Street, they, you know, and you're coming out of the crosswalk, you have to go out into the street and then peer out from behind the car.
Yeah.
To see what's going on, if we remove that spot closest to the crosswalk, it would give more of a line of view.
Absolutely, and this is after the the emails are received and after looking at, by the way, not only Grove, but right up the street at Oakwood.
It's almost the same situation where we may lose, which by the way, I think we can add on the other side, um. Yeah. Yes.
Uh spaces and still and still maintain a twelve foot width on on State Route two ninety-nine or Main Street, bless you, it's um. So I would say that at Grove and Oakwood, that you could um direct B P W and or the village engineer myself to. Um, to remove one or more spaces from, well, probably two, one on each side of the intersection on Main Street at Grove and Oakwood.
Yeah.
Um, as I've received a lot of correspondence about both.
Now, the question I have is we have a lot of parking areas designated in the code. Okay, that there will be so many parking spaces on Main Street, well, is this one of those things or can this board just do it?
I would need to, I would need to look at that, that's a perfectly valid question, I would need to look at that for you, if it needs. If there are more procedures involved, then then of course I'd like the board to act and.
Well, why can't we say move to instruct to the removal of the parking spaces is recommended by you?
That's yeah.
Unless we need to hold a public hearing, that way it's done.
I think that's.
And we don't have to come back to it if we can do it.
Well, it requires board action.
I think that's.
Yeah, that's what I said, so I move it.
Yeah, but we we could have things that, uh, it could be a resolution that doesn't need a public hearing, so it's not necessarily a public hearing that we need. So, yeah, yes, I'm agreeing with you.
So, so we can just move to toss the two spots?
Okay. Unless, unless the ordinance so says, otherwise.
Move to remove? Right, un- unless it requires another board action, the.
Right, we can just do it.
Blue may may advise me that there's another procedure involved, but the, but I think that the the project itself to make this, to make. And this is standard procedure in 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 the case of many intersections and and many communities, to not have uh parking all the way up.
Yeah, I mean, so may I make that motion?
I did, you seconded it.
I'll second it.
Do you want me to turn the order?
Any discussion?
Yeah, can I do it?
Let Brian make the motion and I'll second it, okay?
Alright, still any discussion?
Yeah.
Be kind to you.
And and this is just a point of information, I I received recently, uh I guess it.
You're welcome.
Email letter from somebody about Grove Street itself, so there's more issues coming up about parking there and.
That's.
So, did everyone get that and is somebody looking into that for the future, not for tonight, but.
The hourly progress. Yes, and that's not a safety matter, of course, but I did get the email.
Okay, so it's just so everyone knows that's on somebody's plate to be able to answer that eventually.
Well, I, the particular email you're referring to, I think, has some consequences that we really need to think out carefully. What Brian and Kurt are raising are really safety issues on Main Street.
No, I I I I agree that, I just wanna make sure that.
Mm-hmm.
We have a couple of issues in the area there that everyone knows about it and we're gonna address it at some point in the future.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, blue and red, I think that enough to me.
So.
Um, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Post? That's it, anything else for some of our?
Thank you all for letting me get on, safe, I appreciate it.
Thank you Kurt for staying so late, we appreciate it.
Thank you Kurt.
Thank you, sir. What'd you guys think of that timer, how nice was that?
That's a good idea.
I really liked that.
I like that idea.
I like that method.
Mexico French.
I think that's nice.
Alright, let's see, there might, we might wanna burn through some of these, um, number six, um.
What are you thinking?
I'll move, uh, because as I said, the email, the, I'm sorry, the heading is dis- is deceptive. This topographic survey, we need to do this in order of what happens with a storm drain, we could just replace the the status quo, we need a topographic survey. So I'd like to move to authorize the village engineer to produce such a survey.
I had already moved it, you seconded it.
You did? Really? Well, you got it, speak up, alright, so any, any discussion?
Alright, I deleted.
Or a question?
Is is there any discussion?
Figure, at least get started on this and we'll figure out what to do on the next move, so, um.
Yeah. I just. I wanna say that I personally, I feel like we've we've put a lot of time toward this and. I I couldn't find the minutes tonight, I was looking for them, but I remember when this first came up, we said unless. This is gonna be, you know, the same amount of money or a very practical solution, let's just go with it. And, you know, it's been sitting a while and I I personally can't see. Sp- spending the funds on it to daylight the stream versus just like getting it done and spending the money elsewhere, so. My vote is going to be no on it unless there's some drastic change.
Well, we have to do this what, whether we do what you wanna do.
Well, I'm saying, like, my vote on the daylighting is gonna be no unless there, unless there's a drastic change, and I just want, I just want.
Oh, okay.
That's not, that was spiritualizing.
Okay, I just wanna make it work.
Yeah.
Um, any other discussion?
Um, this has to be done no matter what.
Yeah.
There won't be any difference in what's happening with it, no matter what.
The topography, the topography is the same, it's existing conditions.
No matter what we're what we're doing, this is, okay.
It's a matter of what's there, what the slope is and all that for, so, no matter what.
Right. Well, I understand what's happening.
They'll just be used for different purposes depending on what ends up being the best option, that's all, but this, the tool will be identical. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, I do think that we ought to consider putting them in retainers.
Public access?
Yep.
I think they are.
No, they aren't?
They are.
We can retain them, they're not retained.
Who seconded, who seconded that?
I did.
For their general engineering, they were not retained.
Oh, we have to go out to bed with them.
We we have to leave an hour late.
We have to go out to bed and then then. Right.
And I think they do enough business that we should have them on retention.
Um.
It's an interesting, that's an interesting thought, that's something.
So, public access, what is it we need to discuss?
Yeah, but.
I don't know, cuz cuz.
We already did this.
They still have to deal with it.
Cuz this is the videography contract and it was.
I was wondering if it's a new one.
Oh, I thought this was, so I mean, what we do need to do is approve the I M A, like the the town approved as well.
Nothing else happens.
But I, I I have a copy of it and it was forwarded to the board by Don. Uh, he something emailed last week, I I do have a copy of it, the only difference is that it's it's year to year versus our improved, like approved development. And at the last meeting, we all, we had discussed it and we said, alright, we're willing to do what the town did, and we just um. Add caveat to approve it at the reorg meeting of each year.
So do we have a clean copy for, uh?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I I have a copy in my email, it's like it's a Kennedy.
Okay, just make a note so we make sure it's on the next agenda.
Okay.
Alright, so you can see that, um, uh, what's that, what's what's different with the tenant guy, what did they change?
Um, it was our edit.
Her neighbor is not here.
I know, she couldn't be here tonight, we we put it on the agenda, but she didn't know that we had moved our mainy there, so.
Wouldn't she like to be here?
Do you wanna?
She did wanna be here, I don't, I don't think we should table it because I think that she's fine with what it with what it says and it's more.
Can we next one?
She added our edits, so it's more about whether or not we think it's, yeah, you know.
Yeah, I saw that. It it's good, I, the only question.
Cuz if if we wanna approve it, that's all she is looking for from us, unless we have questions, the questions.
The only, the only thing I wanted to ask Ariana was, since we are in the, well, we can, she can, I don't want her to spend the money printing this. If in the next two months, we have changed some of the laws that she talks about.
Ah, you're right.
And so I wouldn't wanna be unkind, I'm happy to approve this tonight.
Um.
But with the understanding that she has the right to wait to print it. Until.
Wait, who who's claiming to have it printed?
Hmm?
Where's the funds come for to print it?
Um, tenant landlord might be funding it themselves, or maybe the campus is funding it, I know she's been working.
Tenant?
If if the tenant landlord relationship has funding.
There is no tenant landlord relation, they don't have enough members to even call a quorum.
Well, I understand that, but they might, they might still have funding and maybe they'll have, uh.
They they never.
They never applied for funding, well, then she's been working with the off-campus student housing, so maybe they're gonna print it, I I didn't ask her about that part of it.
No.
Okay, the village is not printing it.
I mean, I'm I'm assuming that she has a plan for that because she blew on those.
So what do you intend to this? Think, I mean, I can approve this tonight, but I don't want her to go and print it.
Well, that's the thing is, I think maybe, you know, I didn't even, I should've mentioned that to her, but we didn't actually speak on the phone, she just texted me and I didn't even think of it.
I only, one thing, add dogs under what licenses you get from the town, cuz a lot of students have dogs and they need to know doggy licenses, you don't get in the village. That's my only suggestion.
Um, so I I think, well, I think I should, I think that that should be added, um, for one, and but so. We would approve it with that, but I think that maybe I should talk to her and see what she.
Before we vote on?
Tell, yeah, tell her about, tell her that this has our, you know, I mean, in in term, we don't, we don't have more edits or comments, but. We're working on new housing regulations, action by law.
Well, we can approve this anyway by board action, cuz it's it's not a board function, all she asked for was concept approval.
Oh, okay, well, well, that's what I.
So I'll be, I'll move to, I think it's a great idea, I appreciate her doing it. I just don't want her to go to the expense of getting it printed, and so we should give her the choice of waiting.
Um, okay, I'm, I I don't have a preference really in what we do, I just think we, you know, how we need to.
Well, I don't wanna drag it out.
I don't wanna drag it out, why don't we, yeah, why don't we give it concept approval?
Okay, I move to prove it in concept with the amendment to add dogs.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Um, a little bit next, do you wanna do it eating the street, Ariana?
Sure, does anybody need me to really explain this? We wanted, we were, when I originally put this in front of all of you, we had talked about Main Street, um, we didn't even actually try to pursue that in any way, shape or form. The local food committee said this is a ridiculous, um, idea for us to pursue at this point in time. And if we wanna do that in the future, one day maybe, but for now, we should just do it on the street, the village has complete jurisdiction over. So we wanna do close this church street from ten AM to four PM.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that, unless you wanted to.
N- no, I think that it's better if other people do.
Did, did you check and make sure that you didn't need to do anything since the state considers Church Street a state road?
Okay. No, Church isn't north front of.
Oh, oh, you're doing, you're doing it on Church?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, that I don't see any problem there.
Alright, um, any discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, alright.
Crawwalk?
Yeah, I'll move to approve that as well.
They're using the sidewalk.
Oh, they are?
Yes, yeah, I was.
Is that clear in favor?
They're going down.
Oh, they don't need our approval.
Well, but I'd like to give them our consent, but I don't think they need our approval. Because they're using the sidewalk, is that?
Yeah, some of them stay moving, they can, we don't have to give them that consent, but no approval.
Unless we need to further correct.
We're wishing good luck maybe, but we don't, they don't have a consent.
Please, do you like to withdraw your motion?
Yeah. Is that alright?
I don't think we need to approve it.
Yeah, we don't have. Listen, and just so you know, to keep in the back of your head, um, the law says that as long as you're moving, uh sidewalks are okay, you can have a parade, do whatever you want, you just can't block the sidewalks.
They don't like to wear jerseys, so I was afraid, I, that's what I thought when I saw it, but when they said that they'd get one, gotten one of these shirts, I was afraid of not. I'd rather cover my face and bring in something extra than not.
Thank you.
Kurt, beautiful. Alright, um, now we have the block party.
Yes, that was the, that was an ad.
Yeah, oh, uh, twenty, Oakwood Terrace Block Party, October thirteenth, from twelve to seven P M. Raise money for prevent abuse of child abuse America. Uh, we plan to sell raffles and host games we play by neighbors in order to raise money. Additionally, wanna get to know our neighbors and the social atmosphere and thank you for your time.
Um, are you allowed to do raffles, isn't that some sort of a gaming thing?
We have a games and chance section of the code, but.
They think they will apply.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
I, my only concern is, sorry, I can't just.
No.
Um, is that it says, we the residents of twenty-one South Oakwood Terrace, but what about the rest of South Oakwood Terrace? Do.
We just had a block party request the other day, alright, do we usually ask that kind of thing or just see how it goes?
Yeah, but I, I, it generally is coming from all the residents is what I I thought in the past.
Well.
Like, the resident, like, like Mill Rock Road does a, I think Mill Rock Road, or maybe it's Pine Crest, I don't know, somebody does a block party every year, um, it might be Mill Rock. But and that's like, it's, uh, well, maybe there's more, multiple roads do a block party every year, and I think that's great. But I think it's important for everyone on that street to be, or the majority of the residents of that street to be down with it.
Well, more, it doesn't say what block.
Well, you assume Oakland.
It says South Oakland.
The block for a block party, I'm sure that they meant South Oakland Terrace.
The whole street.
But but also, yeah, how how, from what point to what point?
That's what I'm saying.
When is it, October thirteenth?
There won't be another time to approve it.
See, I wish I.
Yeah.
We could just tell them that you, we didn't have time, but.
I mean, does it have to be October thirteenth?
I think they would, they might consider some flexibility on that.
Because because I definitely, I just would like, I mean, I don't wanna tell people no, but I don't wanna tell people yes and have everyone else on that street pissed off about it.
So, so, I mean, you could just tell them, hey, try for next weekend, get the approval of your neighbors and.
We're gonna move to approve it with the. The qualifier that they must get the approval of.
Signature for the neighbors on the street?
Alright, so do you mind, can I get a generating the same, the notification list that she would note for?
No, it's not, it's not our responsibility to.
Right.
To make, create mailing lists for people like that.
I mean, if they had defined it very clearly as between Center Street and Main Street or Center Street and Lookout. But they didn't. So I don't know whether it's the whole street. And when you say a block party, it needs a block.
I mean, and the Oakwood's one of the only actual thoroughfares.
No, it's Oakwood Terrace though, that's like the little one that's off of.
No, Oakwood Terrace is is what Oakwood is called.
The big one.
Oakwood.
That's like Oakwood Court or something.
Yeah, Oakwood Terrace runs between Paul's, what used to be Paul's.
Oakwood.
And Manon, and there are three distinct blocks.
It's Goggin.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, yeah, yeah, I would say that they they need to define, define what the area is gonna be.
The extent.
Get ap- approval from the neighbors who are gonna be in involved in those areas.
And no raffle.
And, yeah, I can't.
Unless it, well, unless it meets the code. You know, there's rules of games.
I think you have to, I think, yeah, I think you have to apply, yeah, I think you have to apply for games of chance and it might take. I think you have to, I think, yeah, I think you have to apply, yeah, I think you have to apply for games of chance and it might take, yeah, they need to look into the games of chance then.
It's usually not the properties can get get one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the o- the other thing for main artery, that's a kinda a long time to be blocking and causing, if you're doing the whole street, that's.
Yep, to if one if one major.
Twelve to seven.
If they pick the block on the on the uh southernmost end so that you could get into those side streets, it wouldn't be so bad, but you know.
Yeah, that's a good point as well.
Okay, so what would the board want as proof that they've gotten approval from the neighbors?
Um, a signature and an address.
Maybe a letter that's has all the names of the residents who have been spoken to on board, but they don't have, I don't think you need a physical signature from them.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, just use this letter.
But if these two people, I mean, I would I would have taken the word of this piece of paper if it included, you know, more names of residents on the street.
No, because they don't give their own addresses.
Well, it says we the residents of twenty one South Oakland, these are the people that live at twenty one South Oakland.
But they're they're asking to close the whole street.
Right, that's my point, yes, exactly, these people live at one residence on the street and if everybody is gonna be affected by this, they should all be done with a block party.
Everybody else. They should know that, I agree to it, I agree with you.
The block has to request the block party, not.
Okay.
Okay, so.
That's a that's a nice way to put it.
So when I speak to the residents tomorrow to make sure that I am conveying exactly what the board wants.
Yes.
You would like a more defined area, preferably the southern end of the street so that you're not closing down a major major artery for quite a long time. You'd like a list with more residents on it so that the block itself is defined as requesting the party and not just residents of the block. Um, and also they would need to make sure that they can obtain um a permit for games of chance um in order to have these raffles. Um, but you don't necessarily need like a signature sheet for them from the block, um, the names and a phone number would be adequate.
Yeah.
I mean, just names of the residents would be adequate for me.
Yeah.
The signature.
Ni- names names and and address, I guess, which is gonna need that.
I would say that.
I'll take names and address. Names and addresses.
Assuming uh we approve that, so time comes that they block off the street themselves or do we have to do that?
No, they do.
We have to, no, we have DPW, drop drop off the horses.
We we drop off.
Horses, yeah.
Horses.
Oh, do we?
Yeah.
But they do, they do, they put them up and take them down.
Right.
Couple of names.
So can if they were to fulfill all of these obligations, they would be allowed to have the party or would you need to discuss this with them again on the tenth?
I don't think.
If they fulfill everything, I would ha- I would be fine with them having the party.
Yes, it is, yep.
I I would give it approval pending votes.
I would too.
Is it is what, do we have a motion on?
Not yet.
No, no.
No.
Well, well, the only thing is we we don't know, are they blocking off Center Lookout, like are they doing?
Yep.
Why don't why don't we give him permission from, you know?
From Main.
Let's tell them which ones.
From Main to Center, I could see.
Well, where but which which houses?
Probably probably the people on the other end, so probably better to, what is it, Lookout, is that the one going up by your house?
Let's. Let's see.
More residents live on the Main Street end, once you get past Lookout.
Yeah.
You've got all streets.
Okay, so yeah.
This is between Lookout and Platakill, so it's on that end of the street, they can close it from Lookout to Platakill.
Right. Right.
And have it be including their house and allowing um.
Access to Lookout.
Yeah, allowing a access, well, oh, yeah, yeah, would allow access to down Lookout Avenue, if they close it on the south end of the street.
That's right.
And then it would allow people access to Center Street and Main Street.
Is this is this the sorority house?
But Ariana, the residents.
I think it is.
I think it is.
What?
It's the sorority.
I think it is the students they're talking about.
Well, they're definitely student, they're definitely student aid of the average student aid.
It's yeah, it's definitely.
That was a great, great word.
That's great.
These petitioners?
Yeah.
Yes, they are the average.
Oh, does that change?
Oh.
But I do think the residential area is still where I said and not where Ariana said.
What?
Lookout to Main are where the residents are for the most part.
Oh, I'm just, I just looked up where that actual house is.
Yeah, look.
Oh.
Yeah, and that house is the very corner of Lookout and South Oakwood on the south side of the street, there's only two houses there.
Right.
Right, and yeah.
Yeah, but you can't block off a whole street for two for one house.
No.
That's what I'm saying, if they go across the street and get um, there's like the orphanage, there's like the two corner houses, so really they only need four houses. No, no, not not a real orphanage, well, not a real orphanage, so, yeah, they like the four houses, the one across from them and then the two on the corner.
My my intern lives in the one on the corner diagonal.
So there you go.
So you're saying that this off between.
This area right here from Lookout.
From Lookout to Platakill.
And they could just get the three other houses and then that'd be that'd be fair.
No, that one's it. Okay, that's fine, I can handle it, I can live with that.
That one's it and then basically it's just that little, it's really only fo- those four houses.
Okay.
Any other discussion or conditions?
And we don't care what the rest of the people on the street say, we don't want them to sign their own.
Well, I think that they should talk to as many of the people on the street as possible, cause either way, we di- didn't we, I mean, actually, you know what, we didn't put in the place. We do that something I I was supposed to work on, um, in terms of street street closure notification?
Oh, yeah, I think that was a conversation in the.
Yeah, did we never actually move on making that reality, okay, well, we should, but.
In reality.
Mm-hmm. You were gonna write a new form for a street closure.
Well, let's okay, let's let's not wander really far field, it's already a quarter for ten, um, I think or close to it.
Yeah.
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 Um, I just wanna keep focused on this one street closure until we get it resolved, is there any other conditions we need to put on this?
Can we?
Well, her m- the block that she's defined and the motion is are different because it was to get residents' signatures.
We didn't have a mo- we didn't have an official motion, I had directions from the board but not not a motion yet. What I what I have as de- as directions from the board but not a motion is that you'd like to define the area and now it's been defined as Lookout to Platakill. You'd like to get the approval of the neighbors that that affects, um, that they need to get a permit if they're gonna have games of chance. Um, and you wanna rec- and Stuart brought up that it's a very long time to close the road, so I don't know if you want to suggest a different time period for them, but we don't have a motion yet.
And and also a consideration is we wanna ask them to inform everybody on the street, whether they're in those four houses or not, it's still their street thing.
Well, we should be careful because we don't wanna set new conditions right now, we'd never impo- impose them anyone else.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, how many block parties we?
If we're gonna have a new process, we put it in writing and approve it, do that, but you know, not on a case by case basis.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I does it.
No, I'm trying to think what we did the la- I mean, we usually it's just approved, I think.
I mean, I'm not, I don't feel strongly one way or the other, just like we gotta be thoughtful of everything.
Well, it's very important.
Well, yeah, u- usually we have more of a, you know, from this tr- quarter to this quarter.
Yeah. So I'll I'll move that we give um conditional or approval conditional that um, well.
The condis-
How do you say, those conditions being that, that is that, how do you say?
Yeah.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon those conditions being that, um, at the discretion of the clerk, essentially, because we're not gonna have a meeting for. You know, realistic.
Well, we will have the meeting on the tenth, you said.
What happens if they?
Okay, so I'll bring back the conditions.
Well, hold on, that's it hasn't passed yet, so is there a second to that? Okay, motion tells.
I'll second it.
Seven one, yeah, seven else.
Yeah, yeah, someone.
Well, no, I'm just realizing that we do have a meeting between now and two days before the night.
But it's two two days before the night.
Yeah, but you they he can't tell them that day, otherwise it's too late.
Yeah, you can't get games of chance approvals and things like that in two days.
I don't think they'll get one anyway.
Um, alright, so any any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, yeah, thank you, and thank you, Katie.
Aye.
Who's gonna follow up to make sure that they meet the conditions?
Well, we made a discussion of the clerk, yeah.
Clerk.
Okay.
Should be out there.
Alright, well, there was there another one, the arts community, was that the other one we had?
Yes. Arts community.
Uh.
Do we not, is it public access, it's not on here, or did we talk about it?
No, Brian said it was we got the wrong documentation, we gotta get, it's.
It wasn't done.
Okay, so that's public comment, alright.
You're in.
It's, yeah, it's going to Katie and we'll have on the next agenda, I promise.
The arts community.
No, I'm just wondering. Yeah, I got this one.
Okay.
Um, wait, this, last one.
The arts community.
Tricor Mohawk Eastern at Hasbrook, um, Dakota held this weekend, or the Saturday.
Yes.
This coming Saturday.
And he says for apologies, it only occurred to her late Sunday night that she did, they should do this.
Um. Yeah, I'm not sure I could support this.
I can't either because the sporting events.
Close a whole street, have a sporting event?
They use Hasbrook Field.
Well, also I don't wanna shut down a whole street um for parking for an event at the last minute, it's. I I'm not sure that seems fair to the people who live on that street, for instance.
Is it the whole street or just in front of Saint Joseph's?
Oh, maybe it is Tricor, Mohawk, I'm I had a hard time picturing Mohawk.
Yeah. Home up of the one, huh?
No, Tricor Avenue is where Vandenberg, the old normal school is.
No, it's a. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where it is, oh, that's, I'm sorry, I was thinking Tricor between south side and and Mohawk, that's why I was.
Right. No, it's like, like uh, yeah, where the tower is.
The other, yeah, right, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I don't understand, because we already have parking on both sides of that street, why else would we? Why would we close it?
Do they want parking or they wanna close it?
For parking for vendors, or is, I guess they want all the spots.
They wanna they want us to block off all those spots so that they can, is what it sounded like to me.
Sounds like personnel.
Seems kinda strange, then you're you're, then you eat up almost all the spots that attendees might use for your vendors, but that's their decision, I guess.
Really? Yeah, I mean, we.
But I I'm not sure, it's, we didn't, we didn't have parking for flooding, we didn't have parking for the one twenty fifth, you know, I mean, people find parking, I'm not.
But I I don't.
They don't wanna feed the meters.
Yeah.
Well, we, I mean, in the past administration, when someone would wanna use the spots all day, we would charge them for what, yeah, the equivalent.
The equivalent, yeah, you get a pa- a pa- a permit, I think.
Right.
But they're they're actually asking that the street be closed, not just the parking spots reserved, so I guess they're not the one to pack in the cars and.
Well, if you close the street, then the parking meters aren't afforded.
Yeah.
Wanna close the street because they're using Hasbrook Park, is it?
Yeah, celebration of the arts this weekend.
And they want.
Have we ever done that?
I don't remember doing it, we do it for contractors.
Well, close the street?
Not that, not that I recall.
We'll close up spots if you really have a roll of dumpster.
Cause there's a lot of people that use Hasbrook Park, but no one's ever asked for that, I'm gonna get ourselves into a hole.
I would be.
I mean, is it parent family weekend, you do we know what's going on at the college?
There is parents week, uh, which is.
That's generally the first weekend of October, maybe the second.
Really?
I might, you know, but it's also on this weekend.
Yeah. Yeah, that's one of the most traffic weekends.
I mean, parents weekend, that's the flow of parents across from Main Street through.
Yeah. I sure, I could look up when that is.
Why wouldn't they, I'd be happy to close the street from Saint Joseph's for them.
What, that that's the, what is it, Elton?
Yep.
Should we check at Saint Joseph's to see if perhaps they have a wedding scheduled, that's a popular date for a wedding.
Yeah, or if you don't.
Well, I don't think we should close the street on parents weekend.
Could could I make a a suggestion?
Please.
Um, might we reserve the village, the back part of the village parking lot near the garage end as an air, as a compromise for the, we won't close the street, but we'll.
That's a good idea.
We'll give you this space which is very close to Hasbrook Park, um, that might.
And the vendors will be there all day, so they don't have to move the cars once and they can walk across the street and get up.
I think that's what we want the most.
Yeah, that's good.
Parent family weekend is actually this weekend, the twenty ninth, I think, thirty, so.
In two days?
Yep, so we don't, that's not, that's not the complex, but.
Oh. Alright, well, that sounds like a fair idea, they'll have just some space and, yeah, I.
And there's no meters over there anywhere, it's the back lot, so I, so that means we.
Yeah.
No, like a lot of people park there, so we would have to.
Yeah, with the unstruck spot, but there's just acres of asphalt we use that, say here, this corner you can use and.
Right. Right, um.
Um, if if it if the board will permit, we can ask DPW to put up a sawhorse with a little sign there.
I think that's a very good idea.
So should we vote on this or just have that conversation happen?
No, I think we better vote to deny the request to close and offer parking.
We could just, no, we just ignore the request and then it's it's denied and then we can offer them, probably just offer them parking, uh, for vendors behind Village Hall.
Either way, is there a preference? Someone wanna break this time, I don't.
I mean, I don't, I feel it's it's better for us to make a motion and.
Alright, then uh I'll move what Stanley said.
We'll deny this request and offer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The parking behind Village Hall, which will be cordoned off to them.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, uh, move to adopt bills and claim or approve those and claims?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Katie, just make sure they're aware that we still, they're like, any visitors are still gonna have to pay any meters and stuff like that, and they come in to mention it, be like, just so you know, any metered parking, it's still metered parking.
Absolutely, I will reiterate that.
Thank you.
So one last thing and then we can all get out of here, um, I sent you some email, an email before the meeting, I'm I'm not sure if you have time, um. There's a project the town is discussing tonight that is like purely speculative. The idea is that a private company would come in and put a whole bunch of solar panels on top of landfill. And in exchange for using that public land, the town would have all its municipal buildings be given the equivalent of, um, basically free electricity.
Free electricity.
Um, the actual physics of it is more boring and complicated, but that's the gist. So they called to ask us if we wanted to see if we, uh, we might be interested. And I haven't had a lot of time to read it, I just, I was supposed to get this last Sunday and I got it this morning, these contracts, so I haven't, Joe hasn't seen them, I haven't had time to read them. But what I'm told they contain is, um, basically a permission for this guy Vandell Horner, uh, who I do know a little bit. To use our electric bills and whatever other information to generate an RFP and see what prices we get back. Um, he tells me that there's no commitment, we can back out at any time before a certain point, but before I'm comfortable, I'd wanna see what our benefit is, what the lock-in is, what the. Terms are and all this, so if we're interested in this general concept, um, I could get the board's permission to sign off on on seeing on this stage of it. Pending the village attorney saying that we're, we don't have any risk by doing so. Um, because then if in the bigger conversation, I I mean, I have some kind of concerns I'd like to, you know, about this kind of project that I think might not be a good idea. And just one, for example, is is well, I'd love to see solar panels on the on the landfill, um, being locked into this deal with this company for twenty years, which is one of the conditions. Would mean that we basically, yeah, it's a great deal now, but it depends on how fast the rate of solar technology changes. You know, I mean, would you wanna be ending a twenty year commitment to use a computer and put it locked in in nineteen ninety-two, I mean, it just, you know, that's the scale we're talking about, so.
That would be not that.
So so that.
The business end of it, I'm not sure it's a good deal for us, but it might be a good deal to find out how much this, you know, see what their offer is, and that's the gist.
Is is does this mean they're gonna put up solar panels on the on the town property? And they're looking for people to buy the power that they generate and they're offering it to us cheaper than Central Hudson?
No.
No.
I've actually, oh, yeah, well, it's it's at pro- I've I've talked to, um, Councilman Barry about this.
Yeah, I've talked to him a little bit about it too.
Yeah, and he had me- and he had mentioned that, um, that, yeah, it would, if they would offer us like a set fee for electric. And because the cost of electric keeps rising, we would have set costs for twenty years, so we would be able to, um. To define like what what the cost would be and it would be cheaper than what Central Hudson would do and it'd also be, um, like, you know, green energy.
My understanding is that they were going to approach the school district and us.
Yeah.
Yes, right.
And that if. We were in on the concept approval, which did not obligate us at all. The vendors would be bidding and we would not be buying electricity from the town, we would be getting it for free as well, that was my understanding.
Right, we'd be. We'd be contributing it to the Central Hudson grid and maybe paying us back.
Right.
Is this a contract with this vendor or is it was the, or is it the village and the town that holds parties to this contract or?
No, this, and tell me for mine, NYSERDA is involved with the New York State. There's a whole energy package grant statewide. The hope is that the private vendors will develop bids for which they will get the grants. Okay, and then we get free electricity, but they would, I guess, sell off the rest for profit, right?
For our, yeah, for our buildings, not for like everything within the building towers.
How much energy would be produced by this?
I thought our street lights.
Yeah, I got another vendor.
The one that I thought I recommended that story.
Uh. Yeah.
I mean, is it?
But it does, you can't do it to particular places.
It's the, yeah, okay, it's the ten, it's the, if the town likes this idea for the sun there landfill and they want it to happen. Is this a good time to see if they're gonna, you know, pay for the the energy for the their building next door?
That they have never paid their share of.
For the solar panels that.
They're on, they're unplugged from that, they don't get any electricity.
I know, but I mean, that's what it was set up to do, is that a way to to, is there something that positive that could come out of dealing with that at the same time?
Well, I think the positive thing that would come out is that we would get free electricity for this building, the question is how much do we spend? Is it work, you know, all, you know, is it to our advantage to do it, could we use these solar panels for the streetlights?
And there's more, there's there's lots of other PPAs, uh, cause that's apparently what this arrangement is called, I can't remember what it stands for. Um, there's other PPAs out there, so this may not even be the best deal, even if the bids are good. And, you know, if this lucrative, you know, one of my questions as well, can we just do it ourselves to keep all of the benefit instead of just take part of it? And then have full control as technology changes to upgrade the plant, but, no, these are the basic questions, I I just, I don't time, we don't time. And then have full control as technology changes to upgrade the plant, but, no, this is the basic question, I, I just, I don't time, we don't time to ask yet, so.
Another thing you can put in the contract, obviously they're gonna sell it to us because it's cheaper than what we're paying now, but as you say, it's a long.
No, we get it for free.
Alright, I mean, they're never gonna charge us.
No.
So what?
That's part of the deal.
So what's, so what's the downside to us, even if it's twenty years, if it's free, it's gonna be free twenty years.
Well, because we have to.
I mean, how much energy is being.
The more people they get involved, I guess, the more likelihood they will get the grants.
It depends.
I mean.
It has.
No, but I'm saying, as soon as it goes through and we say yes, who cares if it's a hundred years if it's free, I mean, what am I missing?
Right.
Right.
I'm not, I agree with you, I don't think the twenty year issue is a question.
Well, we all have.
It was free, well, one of the questions.
For, for me, my, my issue is much more about where they're going, where the energy from them is going. Because there's a whole zero waste action plan that I believe we all got a draft of, I, I told Laura, I'm sorry, I missed my comments after local food week. Um, but I recently ran into somebody who is working with Laura and the town transportation, uh, on a sustainability center being there. Um, they already have, remember the tool shared that we were supposed to have been set up and never really moved, moved on, but they set it up there. Um, it's already functioning, um, new tools are being exchanged. So we have, we, we're part of the Hudson Valley Tool Share now in New Falls, and they wanna build this center and or have, you know, all these features to it. And I think that it would be really ideal if the sustainability center was self-sustaining, uh, so I think that if we're gonna be doing this, that gives us. Way more points in terms of applying for grants, because we're part of the EPA and we're working on this pilot program, and if that's part of what, this is part of that whole. Sustainable everything everywhere all the time, then, uh, you know, twenty-four hours, day, something to do, um, but that, I think that should be a part of this, I don't know. I, I just read, the, I didn't read a lot of this, I saw some of these emails, but I was just reading the one where it says they're having a meeting October ninth, uh, a conference. Um, proposers conference at the recycling center slash former landfill property, um, on Three Clearwater Road. On October ninth at two thousand, uh, at one P M, sorry, October ninth, two thousand twelve, obviously, um, at one P M. So, uh, it said it'll be opportunity for us to ask questions, um, and to notify the solar project team by email, uh, Randolph, Emma Horner. At A O dot com, if we'll be attending by October eighth. So I'm thinking that I, I can ask a lot of my questions that this, that, you know, I don't expect you to have all the answers there, um, at that meeting, but, uh.
Yeah.
I feel like these are some of the things that, you know, if we're gonna be doing this, let's collaborate all these different efforts and do one thing. To have all these people working on different projects.
I mean, if, if in fact. We are curious and our only obligation is to say, yes, we're curious and we'd like to give a notice of our intent to participate with nothing.
Oh, yeah.
And we can get out of this before November third or whenever it is.
Yes, two, a month or so.
I, I mean, I, I see absolutely no reason why we shouldn't say what interest is, uh.
Does, does anybody, I mean.
Well, we're just giving them that, right, isn't, isn't the question, are we gonna give them access to our information, so it comes with the proposal?
Yeah, that would be, that's gonna be, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So as long as Joe doesn't see any issue with it, and I would assume all that's public information anyway.
Yeah, like our budget uses, yeah.
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 Except they won't have to foil it now, I don't see why not either barring, you know, any objections to our turn.
So, so.
The only, my only objection, and I'll say it quite honestly, no.
Can't jump over them.
No, no, is, I wish, the town has been thinking about this for a while, and I feel, and I wish they had given us more notice.
Yeah.
I wish the papers had covered it, I didn't even know it.
Well, no, okay, so, so for example.
This weekend is when we got called.
Well, ca- like, so, Councilman Barry, again, it was at, not our last consolidation meeting, but the consolidation meeting before. He had just come from Aesopus, discussing it with, I guess, the mayor of Aesopus, yeah, Aesopus, so, I mean, it's, it's been less than a month.
And they're very hot.
That he's known about it, that this has been on the agenda.
But.
Just, I'm just saying, I'm just putting it out, that's, that's.
But what I'm saying is.
Where, you haven't heard about it even a month.
This past weekend is the first.
Right.
Really heard, I heard about it from Kevin.
And I was trying to, he was trying to call me.
The corner long, and I thought that you have to speak with the mayor.
I could try to give him the, send me something, send him something, but then, but we, you know, we don't have to go through the, all the, everything.
Alright, I'm gonna move.
Wait, I think Stuart had something to say, and then.
Thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, it's the concept that they use the solar panels to make electricity and then they put it onto the grid and then you get credit off if you're one of their customers. Uh, off of your bills, and if so, they've offered, our buildings will be off it, is there any reason that they can't add to that, they'll offer what we're, what we, the village are paying? Uh, for the streetlights too.
That would be, well, when I spoke, when I, well, I mean, the question is, do.
And it's coming off the grid then.
That would be included in the electricity bills.
Right.
So that would be part of, whatever we pay for electricity as a village, that's included, is wherever, okay.
Cause it's a bill from central.
Yes. Yes. Yes, it would be all, it would be all municipal electricity.
But there are, Jason did point out to me that there are some things that you have to do with the streetlights. To connect them to the solar, right?
No, because we're just giving the Central Hudson.
Okay, that's what I want, if we, this would solve a lot of problems.
Create a grid, isn't it?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna move the concept approval, second.
Conditional on?
Conditional on that after review and discussion. We will be able to opt in or opt out, it, we're just opening our records.
No, it was, it was conditional upon Joe's not seeing any problems with it.
Not seeing any problem with us giving you a recommendation.
I don't want to rest it there.
Okay.
Well, maybe.
It's conditional, there are people on this board who are far more knowledgeable about the benefits.
This is just, this is just approval to give them the information to get the RFP.
Yeah, that's all.
As, okay.
That's all I wanna do.
Okay, can you move that?
I did. Brian wants to make it conditional on Joe, and I'm.
Oh. I mean, I need it conditional.
That's what he wants.
Oh, is that what you?
I need it conditional on Joe, because that's the whole point, is that, otherwise, we could just make a, a decision right now, but it's all we need to find out, we don't even need to have a conversation whether it's good.
Okay.
All we need to know is whether it's, it's gonna trap us into something we're gonna regret later by giving a sign on this, that's all we need.
Okay. Okay.
So conditional on portfolio determination approval, is that acceptable?
Yes.
Thank you, um.
So we're pers- we're pursuing this, if it's found to be legal by our attorney, to have them explain how it works, we're not signing anything.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, exactly.
The only thing I'm signing, that would be signing is, yes, you can have a bill information, and as long as I make sure that that's all I'm signing, when I sign it, that's.
Right.
Right, that's all.
Exactly what I'm.
Okay.
So officially, I wanna make sure the motion is that Deputy Mayor Rhodes is moving the concept approval of the review of the RFP, conditional of the village attorney's approval.
And authorize the attorney, and authorize the mayor to sign the.
What?
Consent or whatever it is.
Alright, is there a second?
I, I, I do it.
Are you good, or?
Thank you, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anything else? Uh, move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye.